We were the technological leaders of the world. That is how you got to space. That is how almost all of the jet travel occurred because of what happened in the Annalow Valley. Somehow that slipped away from us. We are now going to be the world leaders once again, and all of our children are going to be extremely proud of growing up here. So how did all this come about? It did not come about by the efforts of one person, or five people, or even 50. It came about because the city of Lancaster, the people of Lancaster decided to get engaged in their city. They have got engaged in all kinds of ways. The business community has come out in ways that we never dreamed of. The commissions that they've joined and participate in and actively seek to improve have resulted in most of this progress. What we've discovered is that people really do want to be engaged in their community, and they want to be engaged because not only do they grow, their family grows, and as a result, the community becomes a vibrant, exciting place to live. I would invite you to really get involved, to start becoming engaged in your neighborhood. At the very least, get engaged with your neighborhood watch. It's a great way to meet your neighbors, and it is a way to improve the public safety of all of us. You probably ought to just sit down and ask yourself, where am I engaged in this community? And if you're not able to count two or three things, then maybe you need to reexamine exactly what you're doing with your time. I know that I watch a whole lot less TV, but the vibrancy of my life is 10 times what it used to be. And so, on behalf of all of us in Lancaster, we're inviting you to become one of us. Get engaged in your community. Make a difference.
Here.
Mayor-Chairman Paris.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. So let's have the invocation. Tonight, the invocation is Pastor Fred Ritson-Dollar from Annalow Valley Church.
Good evening, everyone. Please join me in prayer. Father God, we want to come to you this evening, and Father, first of all, thank you for the way that you bless us, Father. It's such a great blessing to be able to live in the country that we live in, to enjoy the freedoms that we enjoy. Father, it's also a great blessing to be able to live here in Lancaster, Father, and we're incredibly thankful for those who serve, for those who lead, and we pray, Father, that you would be with them, that you would guide them, that you would give them wisdom and insight, that you would enable them to administer the business of our city, Father, in a way that meets the needs of those who live here and remains within your will. Father, we love you, and we pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Christmasy. Lead us in. Pledge your hand over your heart.
Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let's have your seats. Is there a motion to approve the financing authority consent calendar?
So moved. Second.
It's unanimous. The financing authority meeting is now adjourned. Now, I've already called the meeting to order, right? I don't have to do that. Good. Thank you. So let's move into the presentations of the Athlete of the Month. It's Austin Rains of Quartz Hill High School. You know, we've got terrific athletes in this community. This is Austin Rains. Austin is the Mayor's Athlete of the Month. He's a junior golf star, and he's from Quartz Hill High School. Austin, who just completed his junior year at Quartz Hill High School, won the CIF Northern Individual Championship by shooting five under par, 66, at Sterling Hill Golf Club. Can I do that some? That is truly incredible. I mean, I don't know how many golfers are here, but that is truly incredible. Now, you know, I've been playing 20 years. I've never broke 100. Austin led Quartz Hill High School to their fourth undefeated Golden Lake Championship, and he also won the two-day Golden Lake Individual Championship Tournament. He was named the 2009 Golden Lake Player of the Year, and also been selected the All Valley Team for the third straight year. He has also received the Annalow Valley Press Athlete of the Week Award. During his three years of high school, Austin has made a 3.8 GPA. That is really difficult to do, because in order to have that, that -- you don't even have a handicap, do you? He literally has to play hours a day. I mean, it is so difficult to do what you've accomplished. He has received letters of interest from the University of Texas, Washington State University, University of Kentucky, West Point, you know, you ought to think about that, University of Nevada, Reno, and Bethany College. Austin has been a youth counselor at the Royal Family Kids Camp, which is a camp for abused and neglected children, and currently plays the drums for his church worship service. For his outstanding accomplishment in athletics, academics, and leadership, I'd like to present Austin Rains with the Mayor's Athlete of the Month Award. Now, every now and then, we have a tournament, and it's kind of like a best ball tournament. Anytime you want to play with me, you just give me a call, okay? Here we go. Thank you very much. Do we give him a scholarship?
Well, I have to say yes.
And we'll give you a $1,000 Mayor Scholarship for your first year of college. There you are. Okay. I just never met anybody. But not right now. Mr. Bozegian will arrange to give you a check. Just give him a call, okay? Okay, great. Okay, now Faith Pasquale-Morris would come up. I was expecting somebody really big. How are you? This is Faith Pasquale-Morris. On April 14th, Faith was carjacked by a man who was fleeing a hit-and-run accident in which his vehicle was involved. Her quick wits and level head helped capture the hit-and-run driver, carjacker. After her kidnapper exited her car at a gas station a mile away, Faith returned to the scene of the accident and identified the suspects, the CHP officers and sheriff's deputies. Faith exhibited bravery and courage in facing the suspect again in order to identify him and assist in capturing the criminal. The suspect was identified by authorities as a prison parolee, no surprise there, who was under the influence of narcotics. He was booked at Lancaster Sheriff's Station on charges of possession of narcotics, kidnapping, and attempted kidnapping. For her outstanding courage and dedication to the community, I would like to present Faith Pasquale-Morris with the Mayor's Neighborhood Courage Award. Thank you so much. Could you imagine the terror of that, and then to still hold it together to do something about it? I'm proud to know you. Okay, moving on. All speaker cards must be filled out and submitted prior to the agenda item being called. The same rule applies if you wish to speak for a non-agendized item at the end of the meeting. Following this process will allow us to conduct a timely and orderly meeting. Thank you. I would like to call for -- oh, I need a motion in a second to add an additional recommendation to item number NB5, that will direct staff to prepare letters to Assembly members, senators, and all opposing, a package of budget bills to close the state's estimated $24 billion deficit projected for next year, including a trailer bill to take 1.5 billion from redevelopment agencies. This matter came to the attention of the city subsequent to the posting of the agenda.
I'll move under Government Code Section 5495, 4.2 Sub B, Sub 2.
I second that.
It's unanimous. Okay, the agency consent calendar. Do you want to pull anything for discussion, or do we have a motion in a second?
Mr. Mayor, I're CC2. I have a potential conflict, so I want to recuse myself, so I'll step out of the room.
We adopt the consent calendar as currently comprised?
Wait for Mr. Mann to leave.
No, that's -- we've already pulled it. It says currently comprised.
Oh, we pulled it. Okay, great.
I'll second that.
It's unanimous. Now, moving on to RCC2. Mr. Mann has left the room.
Move adoption, RCC2.
It's unanimous with Mr. Mann recusing himself. And if someone would ask Mr. Mann to come back. Okay, moving on to the council consent calendar. Anybody have anything to remove?
I think you can remove number seven.
Mr. McEwen, it's number seven I need to remove. Okay. Taking number seven away. Is there a motion for the rest of it?
I'll move that we adopt the consent calendar as currently comprised.
I'll second that.
It's unanimous. I'm going to recuse myself on item number seven. I think that's why my -- what's the --
It involves a client.
A current client.
From which you've received a fee recently.
Okay.
Within the last 12 months.
And so that's the reason?
Let the director reflect that the mayor has left the room, and I now have the chair. Do I hear any motions on CC7?
Move adoption, CC7.
There are second.
Second that.
Call for a vote. It's unanimous with -- Let the director reflect. The mayor is back in the room, and I'm handing the chair back over to him.
Moving on to CPH1. That's the additional time for the conditional use permits. Do we have any speaker cards on this?
No speakers cards, Mr. Mayor.
Staff has recommended that this matter be carried over to council meeting on July 24 -- on July 14th, so we'll move on to the next item. Let's open the public hearing, PH1. Is there any speaker cards?
No speakers cards on PH1.
If the council has no objections, we can waive the staff report. Any objections? Let's waive the staff report. Is there a motion?
I'll move that we adopt Resolution Number 09-46.
I'll second that with one comment.
Yeah, I think we ought to have a positive comment about that.
That our trash rates are going down.
Yeah, down. Yeah.
Wait a minute. You guys got me to get rid of the staff report on a good thing?
You didn't have to hear the staff report.
Well, thank you, Mr. Williams. So how much have they gone down?
They've gone down to residential commercial customers approximately 1.9%, about 3.3% for pull-off businesses and drop-off, largely completed by management or construction purposes.
Well, I think Mr. Williams deserves a round of applause for making that happen. We have to thank Waste Management for working for him, and just remind everybody to recycle. Yeah, that helped too.
Yeah.
Do you recycle?
Absolutely.
Do you recycle?
Oh, yeah. In fact, the wife went and got $42 this weekend on cans, glass, the whole works. That's her dog money.
I'd have paid $42 to see you crush the can.
I don't do that. That's not bad. I don't do the cans.
Okay, is there a --
We have a motion second on the floor.
Let's vote. And it passes unanimously. Let's open the public hearing to PH item 2. Are there any speaker cards?
No speakers cards on PH2.
Can we waive the staff report?
Yes.
Any objections? Nope. Objections?
I'll move that we adopt Resolution Number 09-47.
I'll second that.
Now, that was a bad thing, so we will move on.
They're all good.
Anytime I hear the words "levying" and "assessment," I just assume it's a bad thing. PH item 3, any speaker cards?
No speaker cards, Mr. Mayor.
Let's waive the staff report. Any objections?
No. I'll move that we adopt Resolution Number 09-48.
And I'll second that. My apologies. Could you please vote again?
The city clerk did not like the vote.
You're going so fast.
It's unanimous. Moving on to PH item 4, any speaker cards?
No speakers cards.
Can we waive the staff report?
Yes. I'll move that we adopt Resolution Number 09-49.
I'll second that.
When I think of all the hours we wasted because the vice mayor didn't tell me we could waive the staff report for a year.
It's my screw-up.
Now, moving on to public hearing item number 5. Any speaker cards?
No speakers cards.
Can we waive the staff report? Any objections?
I'll move that we adopt Resolution Number 09-50.
I'll second that.
And it's unanimous. Moving on to public hearing item number 6. Are there any speaker cards?
No, but I think Mr. Mann is recusing himself.
Yes, Mayor Paris, I want to recuse myself, given the relationship with my son in Lancaster Old Town site and being the president.
Okay.
I'll step out of the room.
Since Mr. Mann has left the room, I'll move that we adopt Resolution Number 09-51.
And it's unanimous with Mr. Mann recusing himself. Mr. Mann has rejoined us. Any items for, what is this, the joint continued business? Any speaker cards? Item 1?
We're on PH 7.
PH 7? Oh, that's --
General Plan Update.
Oh, we skipped a page. What would I do without you? The General Plan Update. Something tells me there's some speaker cards.
We have six speaker cards.
Okay. Thank you. Let's hear from Brian Lutke. Oh, we have to open the public -- let's open the public hearing. Brian Lutke will do his report, then we'll move on to the speaker cards.
I have a PowerPoint, so it'll be just a minute. Mayor Paris and members of the council, the item that's before you at this particular point in time is the Lancaster Comprehensive General Plan Update, also referred to as General Plan 2030. This is a process that has been underway for quite a while within the city, and it has involved a number of different steps, which I will go through briefly, including community outreach, proactive community outreach, I might add, a lot of work by a General Plan Citizens Advisory Committee, and a great deal of review and scrutiny, and ultimately a recommendation that is now before you from the city's Planning Commission. This diagram briefly gives you an idea of what has gone on over the last year with this effort. The Planning Commission has taken input from a number of different sources, including the General Plan Citizens Advisory Committee report, information from the Environmental Impact Report, information from public comment, comments from various stakeholders in the community, and as well, things in regard to state law and what they are allowed to do. They have had ongoing and long discussions with city staff, and ultimately, as a result of all of that information, they have voted on May the 11th to recommend to you the General Plan Update as you have it in front of you. This timeline, as I said, has taken a while. It began actually back in 2005. 2006 was largely taken up with community outreach efforts. 2007 was a great deal of work effort by the General Plan Citizens Advisory Committee, and beginning in September and up until May, as I indicated, some 12 special meetings on the part of the Planning Commission, in which time they looked very thoroughly through both the policy document and ultimately, the land use map in making their recommendation. The features of the plan that is in front of you are as follows. It is consistent with what the community's vision priorities are, as we found out in the outreach effort. It does not propose any large conversion of rural land outside of what we call our urbanizing or developing area. It emphasizes compact infill development. It prioritizes the use of existing infrastructure, meaning that where infrastructure or services already exist, it puts a priority on promoting development in those areas. And it also is a very important factor that has come in while we were underway with this. It does address the mandates in state law for reductions in greenhouse gas emissions, primarily by creating a land use pattern that looks to reduce the total number of vehicle miles traveled in the future, as well as encourage the use of alternative energy and energy efficiency. The community vision priorities probably are not a great deal different from what you've seen in other various surveys in the community, but they are to balance growth, ensure economic well-being, strengthen community identity, improve public safety, promote active living, focus on education in youth, support environmental conservation, and ensure a balanced, efficient transportation system. In the formulation of the Planning Commission's land use recommendation, I said that they did take information from the General Plan Citizens Advisory Committee. That committee, when they went through their efforts back in 2007, looked at three general land use alternatives. The no-project approach, which advocated basically keeping development in the same pattern that the current general plan calls for. An approach known as balanced land use, where there was an effort to keep the basic plan but provide more of a mix of land use types, particularly within the east and west sides of the city. And a focused growth alternative, which focused primarily on promoting growth in mixed-use environments within the core areas of the city. The General Plan Citizens Advisory Committee actually reached a combination of a balanced and a focused plan in making their recommendation, and the Planning Commission's land use recommendation follows along this basic same principle. They do allow for areas and encourage areas of mixed-use development within the core of the city, but also recognize the land use patterns that have been established on both the east and west sides of Lancaster, and the need to allow for local serving uses, commercial, recreational, and other things that would provide for those residents in those outlying areas. This is the city's current general plan. This is the land use plan that is proposed, and I've got some highlighted areas so that you can see this a little more clearly in comparison. This is the general west Lancaster area. As you can see, they have followed in their recommendation the principle of balanced growth. Looking at the proposed general plan on the right-hand side versus the current one, you see much more in the way of diversity of land uses, more commercial sites, more opportunities for a variation of housing, and the opportunity for the use of specific plans to again encourage a mix of uses where appropriate. Within the central area of Lancaster, this is really the main area of the city where they are looking at encouraging, in their recommendation, more of a mixed-use approach. The areas that you see in kind of the purplish color are key areas that the commission felt would be appropriate to encourage mixed-use development in the long run. Parts of this are in proximity to our downtown area where this is already occurring. Other spots would include areas that they think this concept would be very appropriate. Staff certainly also endorses that, particularly as we see the mixed-use and smart growth approaches gaining much popularity within the United States and the world at the present The east Lancaster area also relies greatly upon the idea of balancing growth. As you can see, there are more sites designated for commercial use, again, more opportunity for mixing of some different types of uses for serving the population, both existing and projected within that area. The east side also has a small area that the commission felt was appropriate up at 20th West and Lancaster -- or 20th East and Lancaster Boulevard, that would also be appropriate to encourage mixed-use development within. That area is in proximity to a school site, and the school actually has indicated, the school district has indicated their support of that approach also. The city's northwest area, also known as the Del Sur area, does not contain a lot of projected change. There are some small modifications, but in general, the approvals that already exist in place out here would remain under the plan as proposed. The southwest area of Lancaster, the largest change that was recommended here is that we have, as you can see, down in the southwestern area of the city, an overlay for specific plan. The landowners in that area are looking at pursuing over the long term a development in which they aren't asking for an increase in the overall density, but would like the opportunity to use that density in a more creative way. Much of this area, as you will understand, is sloping or hilly. They feel there may be wellsome benefit to clustering development on the flatter areas closer to the urban area of the city, and maintaining open space is a more permanent approach in some of the more sharp topography areas of the site. The commission also recommended up in this area, at the request of a landowner, an overlay for specific plan. They did not recommend any change in land use density on that site. And in the Foxfield area, the only real change that they have proposed to you is a removal of the specific plan designation off of this rural residential non-urban area here. There's really no point from staff standpoint or from the commission's standpoint in allowing that to have a specific plan overlay on it, because the Foxfield specific plan that covers it is really designed more to promote industrial development, and that underlying land use designation is and has been non-urban for quite a while. This is the final chart in the presentation. It does break down briefly a comparison by acreage totals of the existing land use in the general plan and the proposed land use within the commission's recommended plan. As you can see by looking at that, the major difference is in the provision of a mixed-use designation, which currently doesn't exist in the plan, but by and large, there are not a great deal of differences between the current general plan and the proposed general plan in terms of gross acreage totals. However, as I've indicated to you, by looking at the areas comparison, comparison of areas on a more specific basis, how those have been applied do follow the principles that were looked at in terms of the overall organizing principle of the plan. The balanced use approach The balanced use approach, the idea of using mixed use in a focused way within the core areas of the city to achieve revitalization and some options in terms of housing and Staff feels that everyone who's been involved in this process, from the citizens that were involved in the community effort, to the general plan citizens advisory committee, which put in a great deal of time, and to the planning commission over the last year, who did an excellent job in terms of reviewing this and ultimately coming up with a recommendation, have certainly added value to this process and to this recommendation. I'd also like to acknowledge and thank RBF Consulting. Susan Harden is here with us. Her firm was instrumental, especially early on in the general plan effort, at encouraging ways to get community outreach and proactively seeking the input of our citizens in this planning effort. So I would also like to acknowledge and thank her. Staff is recommending that you adopt Resolution 09-52, which would certify the final environmental impact report and the master environmental assessment, adopt the necessary environmental findings, and ultimately approve the comprehensive general plan update that is in front of you. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
You know, I'm confused, Mr. McEwen, and before I go any further, I want some clarification. I have to have a couple hundred clients throughout the city, all of them being affected by the changes in the general plan. Does that create a conflict?
No, this falls under the affecting the public generally exception. So that the actions taken here affect a large segment of the public generally, so that wouldn't impact specifically on your clients.
So if we decide to make alterations to what's being presented to us, how does that rationale? I mean, let's, so that people are clear, apparently, if there is a motion to change 30th and K back to the residential that it was a year ago, then I would have to recuse myself, but I don't understand, because I'm suing Mr. Iliopolis. But I just don't understand it, so perhaps you can explain that to me.
As long as we're talking about the general plan as a whole, then that exception would apply. If you are now talking about a specific amendment to that, to what's being proposed so far, then you're going to have to consider the potential conflicts on an individual basis. Because we've narrowed, then we would have narrowed down the scope under consideration, and you'd have to take into account those, whatever conflicts you might have.
Doesn't that sound illogical to you?
Not at all.
Well, you mean, if the planning commission had recommended that we change 30th and K back to what it was a year ago, I would not have a conflict.
That's correct.
But if somebody comes up to-
Because of that one exception.
But if somebody comes up to the podium and asks us to do that, then I would have a conflict.
Yes.
I see. Okay, so I can stay here until that happens, if that happens?
Correct.
And if that happens, then I have to leave, right?
Correct.
Thank you. I appreciate your help.
Yeah, just for the sake of everyone present tonight, given that we've, the substantial change from the proposed general plan versus historical, the mixed use, can you give us a brief definition of what could possibly take place in areas designated mixed use? Just for the sake of everybody present.
Certainly. It would allow for some combination of retail, office, commercial, and residential use, designed not so much to be separated, but integrated together. The best examples that I can give at this point in time would be what's happening within our downtown area, where you have housing and retail and commercial being developed in close proximity to each other. It's different than the common suburban approach, which seeks to kind of wall off, separate, and keep uses apart from each other. There's a recognition, particularly in certain areas of our community, that the mixed-use approach may be a good option for encouraging, you know, viable economic growth, particularly where you have a developer who may see a market for both residential and retail or commercial on the same site or close to each other.
So if we could- If we could go back to the last slide, and it had the actual change, where we had the previous general plan, and then the proposed, from your best education, why do you think that we need that moving forward from a standpoint? I mean, obviously, there's a change because time has taken place, and so there's been some education that has taken place out in the public in most cities, so... Well, maybe you've already answered that. I just want to make sure that there's some clarity, because if we go down that list, there's some minor changes with land use, but that's probably the most significant.
Yes, I would agree. I would agree with that.
Okay. I just want to make sure that there's clarity there. Maybe now that I digress, I think that in your definition, I think that's met my satisfaction. One last thing. Commercial, I know that you and I personally had a conversation. You feel moving forward that this plan, and I know you had some examples, you feel that we've done an adequate job with this plan to designate areas of, under our best vision, because I'm going to use that word, that we've responsibly taken care of the city of Lancaster from a standpoint of designating future commercial development.
I believe that the plan that is in front of you does address that concern. It provides for a variety of locations and potential commercial sites. Of course, one of the comments that we've gotten through some of the general plan processes, you know, people ought to be aware of where those are planned or looked at in the future. And of course, just from a practical standpoint, if you do that, you tend to retain those sites for the long term, rather than have them convert to some other use. I do believe that the commission took that particular aspect of the balanced growth approach pretty seriously. They spent quite a bit of time discussing appropriate locations and numbers of commercial locations, and I think that the map that you have in front of you does a pretty good job of looking ahead 20 to 25 years on what we think will be the need. Granted, of course, that, given what's happening in commercial real estate and the retail industry right now, you know, I don't think anyone has a real good crystal ball, but I think in terms of making sure that those sites are available for future commercial activity, this plan would do that.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
No questions left. I want to hold off until after our citizen speakers.
Okay, if anybody's here planning to speak on the general plan, what Mr. Lydic just talked about, now is the time to get your speaker cards in. And if there's anybody out there that doesn't have a card in, raise your hand so I can see them now, because the soon as the first speaker speaks, there won't be any more cards. Anyone? Okay, thank you. Let's start with Dr. Anil Kumar.
Before Dr. Kumar starts, I need to disclose that he had, come to the podium. My place of employment is Antelope Valley Hospital, where I run the echocardiography lab, and Dr. Kumar is the medical director of that lab. While he doesn't have a direct influence on my compensation, he could have some input into my performance evaluations. And so that there is no possible accusation or even hint of any funny business going on, for my protection and for Dr. Kumar's protection as well, I'm going to recuse myself on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Cilio has left the room.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity for me to speak. My name is Anil Kumar. I'm a cardiologist here in town, and I've been practicing in Antelope Valley for the last 23 odd years. I have a practice in cardiology on 10th Street West, and I work at Antelope Valley Hospital and at Lancaster Community Hospital. The other day, I discovered that I've spent more time in the Antelope Valley than I did in the town that I grew up and went all the way to medical school in, so this is home. My son has spent most of his life here. And over the years, me and several Hindu families around town have not had a place to worship. We have been using a rented hall to use as a temporary temple, and often have to commute 60 to 100 miles to places of worship in other parts of the Southland. The number of Hindus, Hindu families in town is almost 300 to 400. With some of these issues in mind, my wife and I, we purchased a piece of land on 30th and Avenue M, 30th Street West and Avenue M, about seven years ago, with eventual plans to build a temple. It so happened that this is the right time to come forth to you and request help in making that happen. I heard about the general plan update, or was told about it, and I wanted to request your help to move forth with the temple plan. This piece of land is divided into four, and the idea is to build a temple in one-fourth of it. And the primary funding for this would come from me and others like me, who will be willing to contribute to build the temple. On an ongoing basis, to support a venture of this size, funding would be necessary, and there would need to be constant sources of revenue. And for that, I wanted to build some kind of an office space in the adjoining three-quarters of the land. And therefore, wanted to request that the designation of that piece of property, we changed from residential to an office professional designation. The purpose would be to build some kind of office buildings there that will generate a certain amount of revenue that will support the activities of the temple, and that was my simple request. Outlines of the plan are in your, on your desk. Thank you.
Is city staff aware of the exact dimensions of what piece we're talking about?
The piece of land, yes.
Okay.
And the exact, it's divided into fours.
And if we should decide to do that today, Mr. Lydic, you'd be able to handle that without any difficulty?
Yes, we've had previous discussions as staff with Dr. Kumar, and in fact, he was present at one of the planning commission hearings. So we are familiar with the site.
Okay, thank you. And I'm assuming what we're going to do is listen to everybody and then decide if there's any changes we want to make, and then make them all at once?
Well, I would say since Councilman Cilio is recusing himself right now, we should probably handle this particular item and decide on that if we're going to make the change to the general plan. Because then Councilman Cilio can vote on the whole general plan if we've made the change to it, right?
Right, I agree.
Correct.
How quickly I forget, out of sight, out of mind. Okay, so-
Is there any other speaker's cards on this item?
Yeah, by a shelf hands, anybody else speaking on this particular item? Okay, that's all. Thank you. There is one? One else? Great. So procedurally, we would hear a motion to change the general plan to designate this area office professional. We would pass that now, and then would we proceed with the rest of the general plan unless Mr. Cilio gets back?
That's correct.
Okay, is there a motion?
Prior to requesting the motion, I'd just like to hear the planning director's opinion, just for public record, about his integration of office professional within residential, just so that everybody's clear.
Okay, before he says that, if I could, I actually watched the planning commission meeting on these updates and these hearings that they had, and I can remember when this was brought up by Dr. Kumar, the planning commission as a whole had stated, "We want to do this project for you. We like this, but you can't put a church in an office professional designation." And they couldn't come up with a creative way. Well, this is the way you do it, is just leave one quarter of it, R7,000, and then do the rest of it. So I can tell you that, by watching the tape, the planning commission was in favor of it, they just couldn't figure out a way to make it happen legally, because you can't put a church in office professional. So I just wanted to add that to it.
Sure, but was the planning director there that day?
Yes, I was. I think to kind of further on that, what you have in front of you is much more developed and refined than it was at that point. They were simply speaking kind of to the whole piece of property, and because the temple seemed to be the important issue, there was a concern that if you placed that land use designation on there, it would prevent them from doing the temple. Given the layout that they have, I don't, from my perspective, see anything inherently that conflicts with what's around there. The office professional designation, in fact, was designed specifically to allow only certain kinds of uses, so that any kind of an effect on adjacent residential would be minimized. So I think if you were to leave the one quadrant as rural residential, they could file for the conditional use permit at some point for the temple, but the remaining three-quarters of the property, if it went to office professional, I think, could accommodate Dr. Kumar's concern over revenue generation to support the temple, and at the same time, not really cause a problem for the surrounding area.
Thank you.
Well, I'll move that we change, make that addition to the general plan, that we take this particular property that's at 30th Street West and Avenue M, and change the three quadrants, which I believe are the two lower quadrants along Avenue M, and the northeast quadrant to office and professional, and leave the northwest quadrant residential.
I will second that.
Before I go on, do you have any discussion? Then let's vote. Sergio Sandowski? Did I get that right?
Sandowski.
Sandowski, okay, thank you.
Mayor, City Council.
Yes, sir.
We, I have been working with my client, David Shamsian, on a parcel at the intersection of 50th and Lancaster, 50th West and Lancaster and Jackman, over the last two years plus. It's zoned currently MR2, multifamily residential 2, and we would like to continue working on this project with city staff, and we'd like to continue into a design review committee with this project. Right now, it is proposed that it is changed to 7,000 square foot lots. That's it.
Talk to me a little bit more.
Well, right now, we've been working with staff for the last two years plus on multifamily parcel, proposing single-family detached homes in a condo lot, the clusters. And we would, one of the, our parcels are proposed to be rezoned to 7,000 square foot lots, the single-family detached 7,000 square foot lots.
And this is 50th and Lancaster Boulevard?
50th Lancaster and Jackman.
And Jackman.
And 50th, yes.
I thought that was proposed to be non-urban residential.
It's, I'm sorry, rural.
Rural, that's correct.
No mistake.
And so what's around that area?
It's largely vacant right now. The prison site, as well as the county's youth facility, and the site for the animal shelter are on the west side of 50th, at that location.
So is this the buffer area that planning commission was concerned about?
Yes, if you'd like, I can give a brief rundown of that.
If you would, please. And you can respond to it. I know we're cutting into your three minutes.
If I may pass these out, these are documents.
If you would, give them to the city clerk, please.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, the area he's referring to is, I'm afraid it doesn't show up as well as it could, but it's on the east side of what would be the California State Prison Site. Currently, under the general plan, as you can see here, that entire area along 50th is designated as MR, which is a moderate-density residential zone and land use classification. And then the area behind it, further east, is zoned as urban residential. The planning commission, in terms of, I guess I better finish quickly. The planning commission, in looking at this area, debated what the appropriate land use classification ought to be on an area adjacent to the prison. They had concerns over denser housing or things of that type being located there. They had concerns over denser housing or, or things of that type being located there. So what they have recommended in their plan is about a quarter mile wide area of non-urban, which as the speaker indicated to you, would result in a rural zoning classification certainly different than what is currently on the property. There are two applications that have been filed with the city. Both have been deemed as complete and are currently being processed. One of those is currently in front of the planning commission for the approval of a housing project and the other case will be processed at some point behind it. So those are basically the status in the, the area.
Mr. Ludick, isn't the map missing the school zone in the middle of that also? There's a school that's owned by, I think it's Lancaster School District?
Yes, Lancaster School District actually has about fifteen acres that's right about in this area here, that the planning commission chose not to designate a school. Once again, I, I think from their perspective, they were concerned about whether that would be an appropriate long-term use in proximity to the, the prison site. They recognized however, in their discussion, two things. Number one, that these projects, because they have been previously filed, have to be evaluated under the current land use and zoning standards that the city has. And number two, that whatever they lay as a land use designation on the school site, ultimately does not affect what the school does with its property.
The school can still move forward because it's the state.
They can still move forward with it as a school, that's correct.
But then again, they might come to their senses and not build a school in the shadow of a prison, is that right?
That's an editorial comment, right?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, I was asked a question about this particular area to look into it. And one of the things, and Mr. Ludick can confirm this, is that I understand that as, as proposed in the, in the general plan, the density of this property would be one, one unit per half acre on some of it, one unit per acre, and then one unit per two and a half acres, which are relatively large, large lots. And, and you're going from a medium density or a multifamily density of about eleven per acre? Is that correct?
Yes, the, that, that would be the change in the density.
I think the, the concern that that raises in my mind is that we have eliminated any reasonable return on investments. And where you've got your reasonable investment expectations when you purchase property, you know, you don't have, they don't have vested right. There's, there's no doubt about that. No permits have been issued and they haven't moved forward in detrimental reliance upon the existing things. But I do think that reducing the density by that amount and hoping that somebody would build a custom home in proximity to the prison is, is a concern. I, I find that highly doubtful.
You mean like the Arachi development, which is five blocks away?
It's five blocks away. I mean, I think it's, it's highly unlikely that somebody's going to build on that kind of a lot. They, they're people that'll build anywhere, given the chance. But, but going from eleven to, to one unit roughly per acre, it's a pretty substantial reduction and I think it ra, at least raises the issue of a regulatory taking that would subject the city to liability if we were to do that.
I'm, I'm concerned that I'm hearing an opinion about potential liability that seems to be from the hip. I mean, I don't...
No, not at all.
We're talking, we're talking about substantially affecting huge property rights. And I don't have a report in front of me saying what is being relied on to indicate that this is a taking. And I, I really am uncomfortable hearing a verbal report that I can't, I can't check, I can't go on Westlaw to, to verify the cases you're relying on to see if maybe I have a different opinion. And, and it's just being thrown at me verbally. Now, I understand that, that you might not have known that this was coming up until this morning. But how am I to vote on that? How am I to vote on, on what's in front of me without any way of, of double checking it or coming to my own independent conclusion?
Well, one, you can rely upon my experience in, in advising you on these, these matters. I can give you the case law and it's substantial.
Well, all I'm suggesting is that it should have been given to me last week.
Well, I didn't have this question presented to me until very recently.
Mr. Mayor, I actually raised that question yesterday in a meeting between the city manager, Mark Posegian. Now, I'm not an attorney, but I have sixteen years on the planning commission and I don't know how many planners institutes that I sit through and made it a point to be updated annually from any litigation that would have taken place with the California League of Cities. And my interpretation lines up with the city attorney's interpretation.
And when I took logic ten and Laval College thirty years ago, they called that an appeal to authority and it was a fallacious argument.
Okay.
I have a right to have a, a...
I don't disagree with your, your concern. I'd be happy to provide a detailed memo on it. But given the amount of time in which we had to both collect all of the, the background data to make sure that my analysis was correct, and it simply wasn't time to prepare a written memo prior to today.
What we're, what we're talking about here is whether or not we should have a buffer around the prison.
Correct.
And a buffer around the jail, right?
Right.
And to me, that's a serious concern. I mean, all of us have, have made a, a pledge to this community that we will always look to reducing crime first before we do anything else. And the sheriff's department tells us that this could be a crime issue. And before I deviate from that, that pledge to, to the citizens, I want to know why I am.
Okay, well, there's, there's, there's two, two reasons why you're going to, or why you should. One, one is the statutes that provide that when a person submits an application and that application's deemed complete, they, they get to process that application to fruition based on existing law. That's without the down zone. So these two, the two big projects that we're talking about are going to go forward no matter what happens.
So we'll follow the law. I'm okay with following the law.
All I'm adding, what I'm adding to you, giving to you is another argument that, that I think if, if something happened in that process and they weren't granted that, that right, then we would have exposure to a potential taking issue.
And I understand that there's exposure every time I vote on anything. What, what I want is, I want that opinion. And if the rest of the council agree with me, I'd like to kick this over to, this part of it over to the next meeting so I can make an informed decision.
Sure.
But I, I, I don't want to be making decisions based upon what we think might be the case, especially when we're talking about a crime issue. You know, it, it, being committed to doing everything we need to, to improve the public safety of this community means doing that even when it's uncomfortable and even when it hurts the interests of people unfairly. I mean, we, there's no question that if we do this, it will unfairly affect the, the property rights of a few. And I just think we ought to know exactly why we can or can't do it and why, exactly why we should or shouldn't do it.
You may choose to do it anyway, but what the Fifth and Fourteenth Amendments say is that when you have that circumstance, you can do it, you have to pay for it. That's why you have a regulatory taking liability.
And then that, that should be included in your memo to see if I want to do that. That maybe, maybe the, the public safety is such an issue that we should pay for it. But what I, what I, I really don't want is a complicated legal opinion being handed to me verbally. Not now, not ever, on, on these type of situations.
If I could, Mr. Mayor, you know, I, I agree with taking the sheriff's input on, you know, public safety issue. And then when the, when the idea of that the prison or the jail needs a buffer, what's missing here is the specificity of defined buffer. I don't think that two and a half acre and one acre lots of custom homes is a buffer. That's usually what we buffer for. And, I mean, on the planning commission and, and with the city. If I, if I could, Brian, could I use your, it's sort of hard, we can't, because we don't have these things in front of us. Can I use your pointer? Because this is, if we're going to talk about a buffer and to make an overriding consideration of making a constitutional taking, yeah, that's a weird one. Where you go to press? Oh, just the right button? This is the, this is the questions that I would ask. Here's the, here is the recommended land use for this property. Now, I drove out there today. Right along here, you have homes already built. Right here, you have homes built. Right here, you have homes built. You have a church, a school. This is going to be R seven thousand. This is already multifamily residential that has some apartments already there. Here's a commercial site. Here's a commercial site. Here's a park. Here's multifamily. So what we're talking about is this strip here. If those people have a, a right, as you said, to keep those two projects going, you're going to have multifamily within here. So all the way around, what are we talking about a buffer? I know along the prison here, and I don't know what exactly, whether it's five hundred or six hundred feet. I know the planning commissioner, commissioner years ago and maybe...
Correct.
Since Commissioner Mann has been on there for sixteen years can say that the buffer that was created is the moat and the fence and the, and the scorched land between where the prison starts here. And, and I would agree with Councilman Mann on deferring to Mr. McEwen is that on all the time, the stuff that I've read, and I can't, I can't cite the cases now, but I did go to the planning commission institutes too and I've read a lot and it is a constitutional thing that, and I believe the way that I view it is that when, if you're going to change that to custom home lots from a multifamily residential, I think you have, you, you are slipping over where, you know, maybe a court might find differently, but I think, I think that is, I, I think it's a regulatory taking myself. And without a definite, definite, without a specific definition of what is a buffer or what the sheriff's department would want, then, you know, I don't, I don't know what empirical evidence is that how that's going to be a public safety. There's a huge buffer along the prison there. The jail, on the other hand, on the Avenue I side is barbed wire fence right up to the, right up to the, the road. So I understand the, the rural designation here on the north here, but I don't, I don't, I don't have any specificity on that, but I do defer to Mr. McEwen on, I, I do believe this would, you know, probably trigger litigation on a, on a taking, you know? It's, it's basically creating eminent domain without reimbursing and paying for the property. That's just how I personally feel.
I have one comment and then I have a, a question for clarification. We've been through similar situations like this and I believe Mr. McEwen is correct in his opinion, but I also believe it's incumbent upon all of us that, all five of us are comfortable with the decisions we make and that we have the background material we need to, to make those decisions. I'm comfortable with letting this go a meeting before we make a final decision on it. But assuming you are correct, and I believe you are, that the, the current projects would have to move forward under the existing law when their applications were deemed complete. How much of that land is left? We have the school site on the corner. What, how much of this land are we talking about that we're really arguing over if those applications move forward under the existing zoning?
The applicant probably has a better aggregate number. I, I thought that their projects together comprised fifty, fifty acres?
Thirty, thirty something.
Out of, out of how many?
You're looking at about a quarter of a square mile, so hundred and sixty acres.
Okay.
Mr. McEwen, what we're, we're talking about taking it from one zone to another zoning, right?
Right.
And isn't that the issue?
Yeah.
And whether or not taking it from zone A to zone B is a unlawful taking, right? And it, forgive me if I'm wrong, but clearly this has to have been decided in other jurisdictions where the exact same thing was attempted to do and the court decided it, right?
Under, under various factual situations, correct.
And so it's not rocket science. We either can do it or can't do it. And if we can't do it, there's a case. And we can type in the name and the case pops up and the court tells us exactly whether or not we can do this or not do this. Isn't that right?
There's, there's a whole series of U.S. Supreme Court cases that deal with this issue.
So I could, and everyone else could pull it up on their computers and read it and see whether or not this is something we can or cannot do legally. Isn't that right? I mean, there's nothing hard about this.
It's not as clear and simple as you would like it to be.
Well, then, if it's not, if it's not clear and simple, if it's not...
This is an area that gets to the Supreme Court.
Mr. McEwen, let me finish. If it is not clear and simple, then it is a question of discretion that we are required to assert, isn't that right?
It's an area of discretion in which I said you are at risk of a regulatory taking claim.
Every change we made on that general plan puts us at some level of risk, doesn't it?
Yes.
I just want to be clear before I make a decision, because really what we're talking about is it doesn't matter to me what decisions came before me. There were a lot of decisions made by people who sat in these chairs that all of us disagree with today and would not perpetuate those decisions again. And if this will have a significant impact, which I believe it might, because the sheriff's department is concerned for two things. One is putting children around jails and prisons where people might escape is usually not a good idea. And the less children you have there, the more safe the community becomes. So it doesn't really matter if there's already houses there. Why make the problem worse? On its face, that's what it seems to be to me. And beyond that is we have a very real need. Maybe we may not agree to actually do it, but there isn't any question that we have a need for a jail that serves the local community. And the plan is to put it there. If we fill it with residential houses all around it, those people would object. And those people that we've now filled these, these empty fields with would have every reason to object because their safety would be compromised. It, so it occurs to me, what, how is it an argument that other people already live there? We're just compounding the problem. Now, we might decide, we might decide that, okay, the, and I agree with Vice Mayor Smith, that I would like a definition of what a buffer is and how far it extends and why it needs to extend that far. But what I don't want to do is, is have somebody come in and tell me it might be illegal, it's probably illegal, so don't do it, when we're talking about the safety of our children. Because we are very much talking about the safety of our children, aren't we?
I would hope we're always thinking about that in any land use decision.
I would like to continue this to the next meeting.
I, I would, I would rather make the decision, we have forty, we have, it's going to come back for a second reading, right? I mean, it's going to come back what, on the, on the land use, in fact, it goes on for...
No, the general plan's a resolution.
I mean, what, what was, what's the time on that then?
Um, this is it. That's my understanding.
The, the general plan actually gets adopted by resolution.
Tonight.
Yeah.
Correct.
So that would, it's not going to come back for a second reading.
This is it.
Right.
The, yeah. I'd be happy to provide a written memo on my concerns about the potential risk of liability. And I can provide the complete analysis in a written format to council members. Probably, it'd probably take me, you know, to get the written memo together. I've got all the research done. It's just a matter of a few days and given my schedule, I'd, I'd say I could have it early by, by like Monday or Tuesday of next week.
Right.
You know, that would give you at least two weeks to consider the, the memorandum before the next meeting.
You know, I'm comfortable with, with Mr. McEwen's, I mean, he's been doing this for thirty-one years or how many years of doing the land use? Very specific and, thirty more, forty, something like that. And, and what, and I understand what you're saying, Mr. Mayor, about the safety of children and framing it like that, but what I see up there also is that the, the planning commission added some other... some other uses up there too, and they kept the R-7,000 on the, I'll point right there. They kept this R-7,000. They kept this R-7,000.
Correct.
They added multifamily residential. They added a park. Then if that's the case of protecting children, why didn't they make the whole thing and cut this up here? There's only at the top north corner here is there's actually where the homes are, but the multifamily comes down farther. I think my estimation, Mr. Ludiki, is that this, this here multifamily, there's actually some vacant land that's actually still multifamily, because all the multifamily seems to be, at least the currently built stuff is at the top. This here, this recommendation here of this multifamily was not only decided by our Citizens' Commission, but it was also recommended by the Planning Commission itself. And I'm more concerned, not as much as the absence of a case law in front of me, because I have read them before on eminent domain, is that there is no definition on what a buffer is from the Sheriff's Department. And there is no evidence, I don't understand, you know, if there is an escape, then houses down here are going to be targeted also. I mean, yeah, maybe we'd like 20 miles of scorched land around a prison, that would be nice, but that's not, but that's not the case.
I would submit, it really doesn't matter to us whether the Planning Commission did or did not protect the children.
I agree.
Don't interrupt me, please. It's the, whether or not the Planning Commission protected the children of this community is totally irrelevant to us. What is relevant to us is whether or not we're protecting the children of this community. And it just seems to me that everybody in this room has to recognize that you don't put children next to prisons and jails. With that being said, I move that we continue this area of the general plan until two weeks from now. Do I have a second?
I would--
Three weeks.
Three weeks. I would second that for the following reason. One, I believe Mr. McEwen's opinion is correct, but again, I believe that all five of us should be perfectly clear in what we're voting on and the legal ramifications of it. And if there is in fact a taking, the city would be on the hook for an unknown amount of money. I don't know how much money a developer has put into this project, or what is expected return would be, or how a judge would rule on that. That alone would affect public safety, and that's dollars we could be spending on other items that would be much more beneficial. So that's why you have a second to delay this for three weeks. Do we have better information?
Vice Mayor Smith, I apologize to you. It was I who interrupted you.
That's okay.
And I shouldn't have done--
Just a give and take. Now, is this only going, or can we go through the rest of the whole general plan, adopt everything, and just save this one section for the three weeks from now?
What I would recommend you do is hear the rest of the testimony on the general plan, make whatever changes you deem necessary tonight--
Okay.
--or appropriate tonight, but hold the final approval of the general plan until the subsequent meeting.
Right, okay.
And then we can address this one last issue.
I would rather wait three weeks and do it right than--
Yeah. I'd also like to have staff give us a report on what is a buffer and what's acceptable in regards to prisons. Not anything else, just prisons and jails, okay?
Also, I would like a report from the Sheriff's Department of what they, you know, why they feel, you know, what the public safety issues. I mean, yes, if there's an escape, yes, somebody's going to go to the homes or whatever, but, you know, if you, that means, how far out do we go then? What is the buffer then? They're going to run someplace. If we put, you know, a quarter mile of vacant property there, and then the next section of it is R-7,000, where are they going to run? They're going to run through a quarter mile of field and go to the next housing. Do we make it a mile? Do we make, you know, I mean, what's the empirical evidence on that? You know, what kind of data do they have, and what are their feelings on it? So let's get a hold, like Mr. Cilio said, let's get a hold and do it with an informed decision.
Do we need to vote, or are we just doing it by consensus?
Consensus, that's okay.
Final consensus, you okay with it?
No objection.
Thank you.
I'm fine with it.
Thank you. David Sinclair?
Remember those cards are on exactly that item if you want to tell them.
Now, if any of you are speaking on this item, I would suggest you come back on three weeks from now when we actually vote on it, but it's up to you.
While I'm here.
Sure.
So, I just wanted to say thanks to staff and RBF Susan and her team there, and the great job that they did. The city did a fantastic job, I think, of the community outreach work. And, I mean, that's how I heard about it and got involved in Citizens Advisory Committee, through the outreach work that the city did, and I think they did a great job, and just want to thank them for that. And I think that the plan that the commission, the Planning Commission came up with, I think is a good plan. I think, I like the way, one of the things that we noticed on the Citizens Advisory Committee, one of the first things we noticed was, you know, we looked at the map, and a lot of us looked at each other and said, well, what's missing, you know, at the far east and far west ends of town was red. There was no red out there, and no commercial. And I like to see that the Planning Commission has added commercial at the major intersections out at 30th and 40th East, and also out at 70th West. I think that helps to give the community an idea of, on what's expected for these areas as it grows, so that we don't run into problems like we have now at 60th West when we're trying to add commercial there, and we've already got houses and people saying that they moved out there, you know, with the expectation that there was no commercial going to be around them, and so we had to deal with that confrontation there. And I think that it's a good idea that we have now these parcels out at the edge of town that are designated commercial at these major intersections, so that as people move out, they know ahead of time, and we don't run into the same problems that we're dealing with right now at 60th. So, just wanted to say that. Thanks.
Thank you. Dan Stitt?
I think Dan's on this one, on the buffer.
Okay. Athena Bauer?
She's on the buffer.
You're on the buffer also? Mr. Gilli?
But he, I think he was speaking on something else, but he's done.
We need humor? Okay. I think that's it then. Okay, let's close the public hearing. Any comments?
Mayor, you would actually want to continue this public hearing, would you not?
Yes.
You want to continue it to the--
Continue the public hearing?
Yes, sir.
Yes, because you'll have additional input on, I assume you may have additional input on this.
Okay, but are we going forward with the general plan, the rest of it?
No, no.
Continue everything for three weeks?
Everything's for three weeks. And then these speakers are going to want to speak, so we'll have to keep it open.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, if I could, Mr. Mayor, during the formation of this, and I've been watching the meetings, and I guess this is the third time I've read through this document, this is the first time I've read through this one updated one. I've been working with Mr. Bezeghi and Mr. Ludiki and Mr. Cottle on making a few wording changes. I know that we want to, this is probably the most important decision that we'll ever make on, up here on the council, because this is going to be, this is the document that's going to guide the city for, probably not till 23, there'll be some updates. So I wanted to make sure that all our wording and everything, we want to create a document that we can actually have the flexibility to be able to move forward the way we want, but also protect us and protect our citizens. There's just a couple minor changes. I've handed them all out for you, and I'll read through them. It's minor word changes of, you know, whether you say shall or should, or those kind of things that give us the flexibility. And if there's not a, if there's no opposition, I guess we can just take it by consensus, or if you have any questions on them. On 3.1.2D, it would say individual wells should only be used in areas where it is not feasible to connect to a community water system. And that's where people can't connect up to the Water District 40, and they have to use a well. 3.2.2 sub B will replace the entire paragraph and say, "Any proposed change in the general plan use designation in any proposed development subject to policy 18.2.3 shall mitigate against any reduction of water supply to future developments."
If you could help me out here, tell me what, can you tell me what we're actually changing?
That's the whole, okay, that's the whole paragraph. Before, it said on the first one, 3.1.2D, if you look in your, I can actually read what it said before. It says that we restrict the wells to this, and so this one would actually say that we should only, they should only be used in those areas. So it gives you a little flexibility in case there's some other, I mean, we don't know what the future holds, and we want to have recycled water going out. We might have mitigation, we might be a water banking district.
Am I right?
Yeah. On the, on the next one, this one here, I felt, at first it said, "We will ensure any proposed change to the general plan land use designation will not reduce water supply." Well, everything you do always reduces the water supply, but we could be flush with water, we could be a water banking district and have more water than we know what to do with, and it's still going to reduce it some. So, but what's important is, not that it reduces it, but that it's actually mitigated, and we take care of the problem. And that could be with, you know, zero escaping, or trade-offs, or recycled water. I mean, there's a lot of ways, and I think mitigation is always the way it gives you the ability to do what you need to do on, say, an infill project on a redevelopment commercial zone. 3.3, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I mean, the way that could conceivably be interpreted is that you have to mitigate it. And then, doesn't the person wanting to do any type of change to the general plan find themselves in a situation of having to argue what reasonable mitigation is? I mean, it could be like, like the environmentalists make you buy three acres for one, I mean, the crazy things that are keeping the solar fields--
No, absolutely. And this actually gives us more flexibility. The language before was, "Ensure that we don't have anything." And that doesn't give us, I mean, it could be a mitigation fee. It could be, you know, that, for water banking. It could be purchasing water from the rice farmers up in Sacramento. There could be a lot of things, this language gives us more flexibility rather than less flexibility.
Well, all I'm saying is, who decides?
Staff would decide on this one, on the mitigation.
Shouldn't we say that? Or shouldn't we--
On this, no.
Go back to the council?
No, it's our general plan like that. When it says mitigate, that means we just, there's some things that are set by the state for mitigation, like stream bed mitigation, but this is, this is our plan and our process.
The reason I'm making a point of it is, why couldn't, why couldn't somebody file a lawsuit saying that they failed to mitigate? I mean, mitigate could, to me, mean equal.
And the same would go with the prior language, where you would ensure that--
Well, I agree, the prior language is wrong.
Given the choice, I would rather litigate based on mitigate, because mitigate's a separate matter of policy decisions and trade-offs.
But we're creating--
I understand what you're going with this.
But we're creating the choice. What do you mean, given the choice? We're creating what we have to do, right?
Right.
Well, I totally get what you're saying, and I agree, and I'm glad you caught it, but I'm just thinking it might be a little more developed. We might be a little more clear.
Yeah, we use that language through a lot of, I mean, like our, we have an environmental mitigation fee, and that's what we took care of, because for a while, we had within our general plan that we had to conserve and look at the natural habitat that we have, but we didn't have any mitigation for it. So it put us between a rock and a hard place of, every time you tear down a Joshua tree, and somebody comes back and says, wait a minute, your general plan says you're not supposed to, you're supposed to protect. And so by having that mitigation, then we're able to protect ourselves.
We can use this both as a sword and a shield as well. We can use it to exact mitigations from proposed changes.
Oh, there is that, isn't there?
As well as defend ourselves against the channel.
That's the purpose of some of the language changes, is to give us a sword and a shield.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor too, and council members, also after adopting the general plan, staff and the Planning Commission will spend a number of months coming up with implementing policies and such, which will narrow this down. This provides the overall guide, and then how we implement it will be a matter of staff and the Planning Commission coming to you with those.
Okay, thank you.
So on 3.3.4A, replace, it's basically the same thing when you read the paragraph. This is, "Through the development review process, ensure that potential stationary air pollution sources that conflict with the residential areas and other sensitive receptors are mitigated." Goal number nine, that's actually just a typo or a mistake. Bond measures--
Where's that one at?
A goal nine, it was written goal nine, I forgot what page it's on. You know what it had to do? It had to do with school bonds, and the text, it's actually more of a typo. The text says that school bonds need a 75%.
And it's really 50?
And it's 55%, yeah, because of Prop. 39. Okay. 15.3.1C, remove at any time they are needed, because what happens, and we just said that they are available, because at the time they're needed, usually demand, demand pushes the need for something, and usually get the demand before you get this, so this gives us the flexibility to move forward. It says now, let's see, "As part of the development and environmental review process, ensure that all public services and facilities needed to support a development as outlined in objective 15.1 will be available." So that gives a little bit more flexibility. There might be a street light or something, and sometimes we've worked with development and done things in phases, rather than have offsite improvements or other things that are done at the time. And you can't get a C of O unless it's done there. So, but sometimes we've given out 20 C of Os because we needed to. 15.3.1B, replace the entire paragraph with--
What paragraph will we replace?
That would be 15.3.1B. I'll find it for you. Let's see, B, 15.3, what was that? "As a condition of approval for new development, require that improvements be made or mitigation measures be implemented to ensure that the performance of services, facilities to existing development will not fall below the performance objective identified in objective 15.1." What I had was the actual mitigation in there before, because as you build, you know, some of those things will drop below, but they can be mitigated, okay. 18.1.2C, replacing entire paragraph with, "Through the project review process and lobbying efforts of the county support," okay, scratch that one, we're not changing that one, that's, that has to do, oh no, let me see, no, no, I made a mistake. There was one other one that Jason and I talked about that we scratched. This is, "Through the project review process, makers' efforts to encourage development assistance with the," no, that one we're leaving the same, correct, Jason? That one we're changing that? Okay. That has to do with county property again, right? Correct? Yeah, this has to do with county property, that we work with those--
Which one are you on, 18.1.1C? Okay. You want to leave it alone?
18.1.1C. This has to do with property that is in the county area, but with, is within our sphere of influence, like Quartz Hill, and an envelope acres that we work to, you know, take into consideration what those communities are looking at, and--
To encourage development.
Yeah.
So we are changing that?
Yeah, we're changing it to encourage it.
Okay, great.
Okay. And then, let's see here, 18.1.2, replace the entire paragraph with, "Encourage development that is compatible with the city's designated rural and non-urban areas." Okay, so if there's any questions on those, I think that just gives us, like Mr. McEwen said, it gives us a better shield and sword to be able to get done what we want to get done, but protect ourselves, so we're not--
Okay, I'll move to make the recommended changes.
I'll second that.
Seconded by the Vice Mayor. Let's vote.
And just one last one, Mr. Mayor.
It's unanimous.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
I didn't even want just last one, I thought we just--
No, no, that was, that was one. This is two, sort of group, it's a group change. It's all Jason's fault, he typed it up.
You're typing now? I was explaining what's the page numbers. What about budget cuts?
One of the things that Mr. Ludiki brought up was a specific plan, and I know that, you know, Councilman Cilio and Mann and I have discussed for years, the idea that we have, you know, this postage stamp mess throughout the valley, and it's hard to, and if we can ever get a developer to actually do a specific plan that we have all the control over, it's really important. But there was one thing that I think, watching the Planning Commission meeting, that I thought needed to be done, and listening to the citizens speak, and what they spoke here too, is a number of, have said, you know, hey, you know, we want to know what you're going to do out there, don't come up to us and all of a sudden change. Well, as we know, that specific plan puts a huge onus on the developer for us to make something like we want. We want to look, you know, more like Santa Clarita, but we've never been able to, because we got 20 acres here, 5 acres here, 4 acres here. So this is a, this is a 120-acre parcel that wanted to tie in with the Highlands and sort of say, look, we want to make this beautiful community also. Right now, it's just zoned rural, and I think that it should be an underlying designation Right now, it's just zoned rural, and I think that it should be an underlining designation of urban residential, because ultimately, you don't want somebody moving out there and living next to it and thinking, "Okay, yeah, I bought, you know, horse property," and then 25 years from now, all of a sudden, they say, "Hey, wait a minute, you know, you're doing zone changes," because that's what we do during a specific plan, is change some of the zoning, we're gonna have a beautiful community. So I think we should tell them upfront that, you know, 20, 25 years from now, when this develops out, it's gonna be, it's gonna be part of a, a planned community that's gonna look good, but it's gonna be, it's gonna be urban, it's not gonna be just an open space. So that way, when people buy their property, they know what's coming ahead of time.
Which 120 acres are we discussing?
That would be, I'm sorry, the specific plan that Brian showed you, it would be approximately at J. 8 and 100th West, and it's 120 acres, really close to the Highlands also.
Can, can you show that to me again? I don't recall seeing that. He's gonna steal his pointer back.
Here's your pointer.
The commission recommended a specific, commission recommended.
Commission recommended a specific plan overlay, didn't recommend a change in the underlying density.
So they didn't, they didn't really.
Well, what are you, what are you asking? Are you asking us to change the density now?
Yes, so that people know underlying, but mind you, that with a specific plan, we have ultimate control over it, exactly what it's gonna look like. It's not gonna be built out for years, but, you know, a number of people.
But what if it is? I mean, we're now extending services all the way out to 110th Street.
No, that would be, that would be the onus of the developer, and that's not gonna happen.
Well, it's not, it's not the onus of the developer to put sheriff deputies out there. I mean, extending services out there is, is what got us in this mess in the first place. I mean, we're.
Well, that would be part of the specific plan. You wouldn't, the specific plan wouldn't go through, you wouldn't have, I mean, you don't have sewer, you don't have water, you don't have, I mean, we have things in there for the fire department, you know, that they have to keep their calls within a certain amount, otherwise it's not gonna go through. But this is, this is thinking big, this is thinking in the future, we'd like to get more developers to actually do specific plans. In fact, I'd like the city to look at, you know, how much we can accumulate over on that side and overlay a larger specific plan. But we have to be straight with the citizens that, you know, 20, 30 years from now, when it is built out, it is gonna, you know, we want it to look like Santa Clarita, but that's, that's urban residential, it's not, you know, one acre horse properties or open space.
Mr. Bozignian, is he correct that there's no way this gets developed without the council approving it?
I would defer.
There's no entitlement, there's no entitlement for a developer to, uh, to build that development without council approval?
Uh, I would defer to David McEwen on that one specifically, I would come to.
If you, as a condition of development, require a specific plan, then it would require council approval.
Right.
And we're under no obligation whatsoever to approve it.
Yeah, I, I would, I would say not.
There's no reasonable test, there, there's nothing like that we have to be concerned about?
You know, if, on this one, I, I'd like the opportunity to, to take a little closer look at that and think through the issues.
I'd like more information on it, since we're gonna do it, we're all gonna do it in three weeks anyway, right?
Yeah, I, I think it would be better to, you know, to think it through carefully and make sure we aren't creating a potential problem for ourselves.
Okay, thank you. I mean, I'm not, I'm not opposed to it in principle, I just want to know what I'm doing.
So we just says we don't have to vote on continuing that, because we're continuing the whole thing, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so we're clear on what we, we need to have additional information on?
The takings issue and the, uh, the buffer zone, and then this situation.
Right, and I'm fine with all these changes that, that the vice mayor recommended. I don't need anything more on that.
From staff's perspective, we're gonna see if there's any research on buffer zones around prisons, and then contact the sheriff's department specifically about the sheriff's definition of a buffer zone and reasons.
Okay, good. Thank you. We can move on? Right? Is that correct? Good. Let's open that public hearing on public hearing item number eight, uh, Mr. Lutowski. Do we have speaker cards on this?
Mr. Mayor?
I think that's all part of.
For procedural purposes, I don't, I don't think there was a vote on continuing the public hearing on the general plan for the next meeting.
I'll make a motion.
It may have been somewhere along in that discussion.
Let's make another one, just to be sure.
So I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing on the general plan.
Go ahead.
Is public hearing eight tied with seven?
No, no, it is not.
Okay, let's move on to public hearing item number eight.
Mayor, Paris, members of the council, this particular item involves a general plan amendment request and pre-zoning on a proposed annexation area, uh, on the north side of the city. The reason that this is in front of you is, is twofold. Number one, prior to any, any action by the city to initiate annexation proceedings, um, there must be a pre-zoning designation laid across the area that is proposed for annexation. The second is, given the way that the city's zoning classifications are listed versus the way that Los Angeles County's zoning classifications are listed, um, there is a need to, to look at an amendment, uh, within this outlying area to assure, to ensure that what we do as a city, uh, does not create a problem for uses that have either been approved or already established within that area. The area that we're talking about, um, as you can see here, is, is this area on the north side. Now, the majority of that area under the city's current general plan is designated for non-urban. Uh, this was done originally to try and match what the county's desert mountain zone classification is within this area. Unfortunately, the, the county's zone classification allows a very wide range of uses that the city's rural zone classification does not allow. Um, by way of reference, within the, the county's desert mountain areas, you can have everything from heavy agricultural to residential to commercial to industrial. Um, so there's really a need on the part of the city to look at what the land use patterns and uses are out there right now, and try to come up with an appropriate listing for both our general plan and our pre-zoning, so that we don't create long-term problems. So what is recommended to you is an amendment to the general plan, as well as a zoning classification that would do a number of things. Number one, it would recognize what is occurring up in this area around a mobile home park, uh, known as Leisure Lakes. That is in the area of Avenue E and the Antelope Valley Freeway. Currently, a portion of the land that they hold is developed for, uh, mobile home park purposes. However, the area that is developed, um, is not the entire holding that they have. And in our conversations with them, they have indicated a desire to retain the ability, uh, over the long term to expand their facility, uh, should that demand warrant that. From our perspective, we don't feel that that is a problem. Um, certainly, you know, they are a long-established use. Uh, we believe that, uh, allowing them to expand, uh, within an area that they have plans to do so for the long term would be appropriate. The other area that we have really taken a look at is this area right in here. And this area, if you look at the current city boundary, is immediately north of where the east solar site is located. It includes both a, a, a collection of, of industrial and residential uses in this location. It includes the area where the landfill is currently located, as well as the county's approval of an ethanol facility. There are also uses that exist on the east side of Division in this location that are much more, uh, industrial than they are, than they are rural. So what we're recommending to you is that we adopt, uh, both a general plan designation and a pre-zoning of heavy industrial, uh, within this area of about 1,380 acres, that would allow for those existing uses that are already there to be maintained, or for areas that have been approved for certain uses, uh, to continue to allow to be operated in accordance with the permits the county has granted, should the city ultimately annex that location. The remaining area, which is already designated as rural residential, um, we feel can remain. Uh, there are not, in most cases, large-scale development patterns in that area that set a certain land use pattern, uh, and we feel that it is okay from, from our standpoint to maintain them, uh, as rural designations right now. In many cases, um, you know, that, you have isolated houses or other things that would certainly fit within that classification. With that, we feel that, uh, the general plan amendment and the pre-zoning that we've proposed, uh, would deal with the areas that currently have development or approvals in them. We are recommending that you adopt, uh, Resolution 09-53, uh, which would amend the general plan in this area and introduce Ordinance 925, that would establish the pre-zoning for this proposed annexation area. And of course, that's an item that's on your agenda later this evening. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Lutowski. Let's open the public hearing. Uh, we'll start with Alexander Trossel.
My name's Alex Troche, I live in that area that, uh, the planning to annex. Um, I'm not quite sure how I'm gonna decide on this, uh, I just have far too little information so far. I heard about this plan for annexation from a kind neighbor, and I, I spoke and asked questions at the planning commission meeting a week ago, however, the answers were indirect and not very reassuring. More information is coming to me in trickles. What is the green corridor? Uh, I've yet to find out what actually the plans are there. What I am wondering really is, who has an, who has, uh, what plans, uh, for my neighborhood and my property? It seems like this city does. Uh, I have my own long-term plans, and I do not plan on being forced or taxed out. I understand the change for the future, but the cost of development in this city is so outrageous and prohibitive, it keeps startup businesses from development. So you're not creating new jobs, you're killing them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Pam Mills?
Good evening, Mayor and council members.
Good evening.
I live in the area, the heavy industrial area, along with my neighbors that are behind me. We didn't even know anything about this, we're county, and we had no idea that the city was going to even annex us. We had no input, nobody ever contacted us. We didn't know what was going on, until we went to the planning commission meeting last week, and now we're here. Um, we're all worried about what's gonna happen. There's, uh, lack of facilities out there, the phone lines are all 1950s, there's been a moratorium that you couldn't build out there for years. Um, we have all our own wells, we have no sewer, we're all on septic tanks, it's very, very rural out there. We don't have the county facilities as far as fire hydrants, we don't have natural gas, we're all on propane, and now, we're gonna have to take and be rezoned, and we're all worried about how it's gonna affect us, bringing things up to code, or what's gonna happen with our properties and our property values. And if it's gonna, essentially, be in part of the city, if we're gonna have to move, we can't maintain our properties and bring it up to the city codes. We don't know what's gonna happen, and we're all worried about that. But we had no input on this measure, and we asked that you take in, um, think about it and, and maybe take in, redevelop some other part of the area. There's, like, the Foxfield corridor, they did all the, all the tests and everything else, and there was a lack of roads, there was a lack of water, sewer, and everything else, and you're just diving right back into the same pond. It's just all collegiate, raw land. So, I just want you to consider that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm hearing you tell me there's two problems. One is, there's a lack of information.
There's a very lack of information. Nobody knew about this, I saw it in the paper.
And, and people are.
And nobody contacted us, and we're just sitting there, and it's like, we're county, and now we're gonna be city, and nobody knows what's gonna happen.
Can we get some type of, of program out there so that, I mean, it, it seems to me that people are having to undergo a lot of needless fears, that, that, that aren't ever going to happen to them, but they have a reason to believe it might. So what can we do to, to bring the folks together and educate them?
Well, the, this action and an action you're gonna consider in a couple minutes is to file an application with LAFCO, which is the, as you know, is the group that deals with this. In that process, there's a long and lengthy public, um, notification process, the ability for the public to comment, they take into account, uh, what the, the lady has said, all those concerns, and deal with it in that process. We need authority from the council, however, to go forward to start the process, is what we're asking now.
Mrs. Mills, does that help you?
Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
I heard, you know, I could interrupt for a moment. I heard one other concern, and that was about the physical infrastructure in that area that the county has, or not provided, uh, over the years, and, uh, without making any promises, if you want to see physical infrastructure, look at our city, we have some. We can't even begin to provide it out there if you aren't part of the city. Look, look at what you've got out of the county so far.
Sounds good.
I try.
Uh, is it, is it Rhonda McMichael? Thank you.
Good evening, thank you for coming. Good evening, Mayor, and everyone on the committee. I'm Rhonda McMichael, I live up on Division, and we're gonna be part of that area, too, between G and F. I have went around today, yesterday, and today, I got 53 signatures of nobody that knew anything about it. They didn't even know about the last meeting that was held. So they signed, I also got more voters in the process, because they're, like Pam said, they're all worried. We do have natural gas out where we live. We do, uh, we are on a well, yes. Um, our county is just great, just like you said, okay? I'll grant you that. But everybody's worried, because we are low-income, and I think that there is plenty of areas where it could have been picked to build, have already been purchased by Lancaster to build, and there's been nothing built, there's not many jobs. I work here in town in Quartz Hill, I'm a leasing agent, and I know with what, everybody out there being homeowners or tenants are low-income, and I feel that a big part of it was because of that, and because of water out at the trailer park where we live is exceptionally great. It is, it's been tested, everybody's been out there to check it numerous times, but nobody came out to inform us of anything else. And as you said, about LAFCO coming out and, LAFCO coming out, and feeding us information would be wonderful, but these are 53 signatures of everybody opposing this whole build out here.
But it, it seems to me they're opposing what they don't know.
Correct, because they're afraid that if they are, if the city takes over and they cannot meet their standards, that they would be asked to move. If they were offered money to buy properties and, say, like in the mobile home park we're at, if our landlord was offered money and she took it, then it's looking at us like, "Okay, now what's gonna happen to us?" Because we were not fed that information.
I can assure you, there's no plans to remove that trailer park that I'm aware of. Nobody's ever mentioned anything like that.
Because we're going that they want to take, build heavy industrial and stuff.
Well, I, I think it, I think it has more to do with, with our solar and alternative energy, which, you know, I mean, that's the designation, but it's really not.
Yeah, because I see they're a nice big plant.
But you certainly have a right to know everything that is planned, and, can we turn that off, please? And you have a right to know everything that's going to be expected of you, and I, I can assure you that we, we will not increase the burden, uh, and then you can decide. You could decide. You could decide then whether, you know, this could be a great thing for you, or it could be a bad thing. But right now, nobody knows, and what I would recommend is that people not just react to fear, let's react to knowledge. And nothing gets decided until everybody knows everything that's going on, and you have a say, okay?
Please, yes, I would love a say, because I have grandchildren out there. There's seven of them that live out there, and it's safe for us, you know?
Sure.
We're rural, it's safe. We're not in town. I used to manage in town, in Palmdale, on Q4, Lark and Fifth Street East. I had to go in there and kick people out.
You know how Palmdale is.
Yeah. Okay, I had to kick people out. I was a regulator. I helped with starting up the PAC program and stuff with Lee Derico and Mike McNeil. So, you know, I moved my family out there, because it's rural. It's nice, you know? People dump off their animals out there. I'm the pet person. Me and the manager, we get the animals and find them homes. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Can I give this to someone?
Give it to the city clerk, and she'll give it to us. Sounds like a good list to start a community presentation to. Yes. Hey, you've done half the work for us. Thank you. Wendy Stewart? Hi.
My boyfriend sent me up here with a letter to read to you about the annexation.
Okay, I'm old and deaf, so you have to speak a little louder, okay?
Okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I have been living in this area that you are trying to annex all my life. I've been... I have dogs in most places and will not take them. I'd really like it if you did not annex this area, because I don't know of any places that would take my dogs, even though they are fixed and licensed. I also have a lot of friends in this area that raise livestock that do not know where they would go to help to raise them. There are not many places that you can raise livestock, and this is one of the few, and these people belong to the FFA and 4-H clubs to take to the fair for the junior livestock auction, excuse me. There's not many places that the kids could take their livestock in this area. Sincerely, thank you, Wyatt Dobbs. This is home. I've lived there since I was 19. I live on the Avenue G Trailer Park. And we're just afraid we're gonna lose our homes.
You know, there really isn't any plan to disrupt anyone.
We live across the street from the solar plant.
What do you think of it so far?
The towers are bright.
The towers what?
The towers are very bright during the daytime.
Are they really?
Yes, sir. They're very quiet, except they've cut off our electricity a few times, but to get things set up for them, but other than that, they've been fine.
Okay. Okay, you will have every opportunity to find out what we have planned, and seeing as how we don't know what we have planned yet exactly, you'll learn along with the rest of us, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I keep hearing an overriding fear. Rhonda McMichael said, talked about the city of Lancaster buying her property. If we could have staff give an explanation, it's the difference between buying property and annexing it, and also seems to be concern of what happens to people's property, what happens to existing uses there if we annex the land? Is there any change in what they can and can't do with the property they currently live on?
Yeah, could we... Go ahead and let these folks know, okay? I mean, now's a good time.
Well, I would defer to probably Brian on that. I would say that the annexation obviously means they would simply be in the jurisdiction of Lancaster versus the County of LA, which does have different standards. Brian or Dave may comment on the grandfathering.
I can speak briefly to it. The city's zoning code, including the industrial zones, allow for a continuation of legally established uses. So, and I would look at a couple of areas in our city. If you look at the Lansdale area that is down south of L to M, you know, there's a mix of uses that existed in there that were allowed, was allowed by the county. But the city zoning code says if you have a legally established residence, if you have a legally established use of some kind that was in conformance with the regulations, and LA County's regulations are fairly liberal in that area, the city's code allows you to continue to operate that. It does not even render it non-conforming, so there's no... There's no time when you have to stop it. In other words, you can continue to operate it as you always have.
Everybody understand that? There isn't gonna be any change to what you're doing now. You get to keep doing what you're doing now, okay? But, you know, there'll be other hearings and other public information sessions to further expand on that. Okay, is that all of them? Okay, let's close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
I move that we adopt Resolution 09-53.
Before you do, you did receive a letter, which I believe is in front of you, from Natural Resources Defense Council, in which they raised some concerns about the use of the mitigated negative declaration in connection with this decision, and suggesting that we should delay it indefinitely while we prepare a full EIR. And I, in reading this and discussing it with Mr. Lutke, I think that they don't really appreciate or understand the fact that the zoning of this property will be consistent with the current uses. And it's merely the changes in the designations are just to match up what we have as our land use designations, but it matches what is already there.
So there is no impact?
So there really is no change in the designated land uses. And I think, notwithstanding the fact that secret cases are relatively easy to bring and easy to prevail on when you're doing something less than a full EIR, I think it still would be advisable for the council to simply move forward on this at this time, and then we'll deal with this group during the process and make sure that their concerns are addressed during the process.
Thank you. I'm sorry, did I have a second?
I haven't made the motion yet. I move to adopt Resolution number 09-53 and introduce ordinance number 925.
I second that.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. Okay, we have a staff report on, what is this, JCB1 from Barbara Boswell. Oh, Barbara, you've changed.
Actually, you're gonna have to settle for me on this one. I'll be... Oh, thank you. No, I'll be brief. We gave the presentation, obviously, at the last council meeting. We've had the public hearing. The issue's been covered in the media pretty well, and the budget, I just want to hit a couple of points. The bottom line on this is there are reduced revenues in this budget, reduced resources, reduced staff, but we are maintaining service. We're very proud of that. This budget continues public safety as our number-one priority. I think what it does very significant is it does downtown in a spectacular way, and I'd like to spend one moment on that. We had a press conference today for the LPAC season announcement, and afterwards, and she gave me permission to tell this story, Michelle Wilcox from California Bank and Trust came up and said that she was talking to her daughter this weekend, who's a successful attorney in San Francisco. She told her mom that if she knew what was happening downtown and this LPAC season, she might have stayed in the Antelope Valley. And I think that's one of the biggest testaments to why we're making the downtown what it can really be. I also want to thank, obviously, the staff for all the work they've done on this, and I mean the extended staff, but also the partnership that we have with the council and with the community and staff, because this truly is a budget that was crafted with lots of input, with the leadership of the council, with the creativity of staff, and with the support of the community. With that, we'd be happy to answer any questions, and we proudly recommend adoption of this budget.
Any speaker cards?
No speaker's cards, Mr. Mayor.
So do we have to do it resolution by resolution, or...
No, we can do it as... I was gonna make the motions, but we could do the redevelopment agency as a group, and then do all the items as the city council recommendations as a group. So I'll move for the agency that we adopt Resolution number 06-09 and Resolution number 07-09.
Second? Let's vote. It's unanimous.
I'll move that we adopt resolution for the council, Resolution number 09-0... I'm sorry. 09-54, 09-55, 09-56, and 09-58.
I will second that motion.
Let's vote. Moving on to new business item number one. Any speaker cards?
No speaker's cards.
Can we waive the staff report? Any objections?
No objection. I move that we adopt Resolution number 09-59.
I second that.
It's unanimous. New business item number two. Any speaker cards?
No speaker's cards, Mr. Mayor.
Any objections to waiving the staff report?
I'll move...
You must be upset. You didn't get one moment on the mic, did you?
I'll move that we adopt ordinance number 926.
I second that.
It's unanimous. Okay, new business item number three, Mr. Bozignian. I guess we have some speaker cards on that one, do we? Maybe even some council comments.
I noticed you didn't waive the staff report on that one. It's a quick staff report. The Criminal Justice Commission, at their last meeting, had a discussion and ultimately recommended that the council consider changing the mayoral term, which was established by a vote of the people, from a two-year term to a four-year term. If it were to change, it would also have to go to the people in a binding vote to do that. The rationale of the Criminal Justice Commission, if I could summarize, is that they believe that the public safety is a very complex issue. Some of the other commissions deal with complex issues. They were just getting up to speed, and they, the majority of them valued stability and believed because, in our ordinance, the mayor appoints, that a change of mayor after two years does not give them or the mayors, the opportunity, any future mayors, to implement their vision and deal with what they need to deal with in complex issues. That's summarizing their position for them. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? Mr. Cilio, we must have a question.
I don't have a staff question, but you have some discussion when we get to that point.
Okay. Well, I'm wated with bated breath. David Paul.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council, good evening. I hung around last week, a couple weeks ago, at the Criminal Justice Commission. I wanted to speak on the issue, and I had to get home. I'm taking care of my boys now. But what I was gonna say then is what I'll say now. It's just a great idea. I think that people need the time to get up to speed. All those things are true. I'd like to see us move towards charter in our city, like I've talked about before, and then there's other things that come down the road. But in the meantime, this is a great move. The mayor needs four years, and I support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Scott Pelco? Gee, I wonder what Scott's gonna say.
Well, it's obvious to me that the Criminal Justice Commission, which is appointed by you, and all the decisions to make the final decision on the Political Justice Commission were made by you as far as who was on this commission. And to quote you in the paper here, it says, "I find myself starting to worry about fringe groups. There is one group in this city that has basic needs and basic needs and basic desires from city government, and oftentimes that requires me to offend fringe elements." Well, to me that...
I think you misread that. I think what it actually said, Mr. Pelco, was there's the core group, not one group. Just so we're clear, okay?
You're right. It does say core group. I apologize. Apparently, that core group appears to be developers, you know, like Mr. Gilli and Mr. Visco, that apparently have a very tight reins on the majority of the council here.
Because I made them so happy tonight?
Oh, you probably did. You probably did. I haven't looked into who owns all the property out that way yet, but, you know, who knows what will end up, what will end up coming about because of that. But since this appears to be very controversial, and that the Criminal Justice Commission was appointed by you, and everything else, and since you want to try to make your term fit the needs of major developers, I see no recourse on my behalf that if you vote in favor of this, that I will file a political integrity complaint with both the district attorney and also with the Attorney General's office. And yes, I will be following through with a formal complaint in that if you do vote yes on this tonight.
Will that be in addition to the ones you've already filed?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You know, I got better things to do than come down here. Good to see you guys.
You know, I'm a little concerned as to why you're not doing them.
Well, because I read something in the paper that really got to me today. First of all, I wonder what the Justice Committee is doing, look at elections. I mean, unless you charge them to do that, I don't know. And the comments that they made were self-serving to them. You know, they said, "If we get to mayor a four-year term, we will be here four years also." And then they come back and say, "Well, it gives us time to learn our job," you know? Well, you should know what the job you're doing when you run for it. When you ran for mayor, you should know what the mayor's demands are.
Well, I want to confess to you, Mr. Rodeo, that when I ran for mayor, I had no idea what I was getting into.
I thought you were sharper than that.
I thought I was too, but I gotta tell you, I was truly surprised.
You know, but, you know, in the last election, the people voted, they voted for a mayor for two years, you know? And the Justice Committee serves at the pleasure of the council. You recommend they appoint that there. And when a guy comes out and says, "I want to extend our term, so let's extend the mayor's term, so that he'll extend our term," that just doesn't sound right, you know? It's just self-serving. And I think it's a bad idea. I feel that you're gonna have to go to the voter with it anyway, and I don't think the voters are gonna go for four years. I don't... Because I think if they would have, they would have done it the first time around, you know? And I don't know why the Justice Committee came out with that recommendation. I really don't know. It has nothing to do with justice, unless we have something going on in elections that they're looking at. I don't know, you know? But anyway, my recommendation is, the city's running good now. You seem to be doing a good job. You guys got four years, you got another two years. And if you're doing a good job, you shouldn't be afraid. You'll get reelected, very easy. And you won't do two years, you'll probably do another six or eight. Look how many terms Roberts did. So my recommendation is to allow it to stay like it is. And if the Justice Committee can't fill the bill knowing their job, then I think you should replace some of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Andy Vasaki.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city council, it's my pleasure to be here. I haven't been here in a while. So I came to visit some people tonight, looked over the agenda, and saw this item on there and wanted to comment on it. First, let me say that... First, let me say that I am support of asking the voters as to whether they would support a four-year term. Not because elected officials typically move to the political center as their terms wind down in order to appeal to more voters. I sure as heck hope not. I hope people have integrity, that they stick with their positions. And not because previous councils were so worried about offending anybody, the very little progress was made. That's the main reason why I'm sitting here, standing before you right now. I take exception to that one. I had the privilege of serving ten years as a member of the Lancaster City Council. And during those ten years, I think we made tremendous progress. Let me remind you that when you took office in April, the election was in April, the first quarter of last year, crime had already taken a significant drop. That was because of hard work done by the previous council, the previous administration, the previous council, and the previous administration before that. I guess what I'm saying is, I want to stand here and say, during ten years, I was never critical of a council that stood before me or that came before me. And I would appreciate the same dignity. Ten years of my life was important to me, and I think we made tremendous progress as a city during those ten years. The reason I support asking the voters this is because it's right. The President of the United States, who's the head of our country, serves a four-year term. The governor of our state, who's the head of our state, serves a four-year term. Certainly, the head of our city should also serve a four-year term. I've been there. I've had to run after two years before... Run an election after two years before. It's just too much. So, I will vote in favor of it if you ask the voters to make that decision. And I support you asking them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Vasaki. Richard Cook.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. My name is Richard Cook. For the records, I've lived in the Anlo Valley in Lancaster since 1953. I'm a Rotarian, a Kwanin. I'm a sit on the Board of Directors, the Anlo Valley Board of Trade, the AV Sheriff boosters, and a trustee of the Lancaster Cemetery District. My volunteerism is a way of giving back to the city that I love. I've lived here all of my life. My wife and my family live here. My wife of 35 years, Diana, this month, lived at 15th Street West Lancaster Boulevard. I've gone to Montavista, Parkview, AV High School, graduate with Ken Mann, and AV College. In all of these years, I've seen good and I've seen bad that's happened in the city of Lancaster. Mr. Mayor, in your short term of office, you have made significant changes to Lancaster and to the surrounding areas that go far and beyond the city boundaries. You've taken a stand against crime, a stand against gangs, against meth lab persona. You look for citizen input. You ask for citizens' councils and councils to change the way the city of Lancaster looks and the way the city of Lancaster will move forward. What I want to say to you is that I support the criminal justice decision. I support what they're doing, and you need more time to continue on with your progress. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. Before we start the discussion, Mr. Vasaki, I apologize to you for my comments in the paper. I should have said that I think you would have made more progress. And as you know, when you're doing monologues to the press, you oftentimes put your foot where it shouldn't go. Thank you. Okay, any discussion?
Of course.
Who's diving in first?
I'd love to.
Go ahead.
I kind of see this in two parts. One is how the issue came before us and then the proposed solution to the problem. It was brought up by Commissioner, Vice Chairman Crist, which was a commissioner nonetheless, at the Criminal Justice Meeting to propose that we bring to the voters changing the mayor's term from two years to four years. And his reasoning was that it's... There's quite an educational component that goes on when you join a commission, whether it be Criminal Justice or Architectural Review or Planning Commission. And in two years, you've just sort of gotten your feet wet. And the experience on those commissions has a great value to the city. It doesn't make sense to invest a lot of time and energy and training into citizens who want to give back to their community just to throw it away two years later. That applies not just to Criminal Justice, but to all of our commissions. How do we get to this point? Some time back, prior to this term, council members brought forth nominees for appointments such as that, and the mayor brought one as well. We had commissions of five. Four members would serve for four years and one would serve for two years. I think the committee members are starting to figure out that political appointments are just that, appointments, and that they aren't for forever. So, I think Commissioner Crist offered up the only solution he saw would be to change the appointing person's term from two years to four years, thereby giving them a longer term. The issue there is that we don't want to lose experienced commissioners. I made that argument during the appointment of the planning commissioners, and I was on the losing end of that vote. Not to say our planning commission is not doing a good job, but they are learning how difficult the job is and that there are, as tonight, serious land use issues, lots of case law, a large body of knowledge they need to undertake and understand. So, in my view, that's how we got here. The solution he put forward was extending the mayor's term from two years to four years, or at least putting that question to the voters. My question is, is there another way to do this? State law allows our mayor to make appointments. I'm not sure. Is our appointment for... Is it for one year or two years? Is it...
It's for one year, and I think most of the commissions have a sunset clause, and so we have to reactivate them. And... But it's also... They're all at the discretion of the mayor and the council.
So, if... That certainly... That state law certainly allows the mayor to do that. And I don't have a solution for this, but is there another way that appointments could be made that would allow them to be made for more than two years? And I don't know the answer to that.
I'm not sure one way or the other. However, I would oppose that simply because...
I don't doubt that.
Well, the reason for it is very simple, that, you know, some people have the ability to devote more time than others. They get in there and they find out it requires more time than they intended. I want people to be extremely effective, operating at 100% of capacity. And if they're unable to do that, then I want to be in a position to encourage them to do something else. But if my encouragement fails, I want to... Us to be... And it's not just me. I mean, it requires all of us to vote. I want all of us to be able to move those commissions around. And in fact, I'll be talking about it later on in the day, that the next council meeting, we're going to do just that.
That's an excellent point, and I agree with that. I think you need... Yourself and the council need that authority to challenge those who have maybe gotten in over their head and... Occasionally, changes need to be made. Is there... Is there another way to make appointments? The concern of the commissioners, I believe, is that their experience and their value won't be honored by the next office holder.
I think that's reasonable to be concerned about. I mean, sometimes it is and sometimes it isn't. I mean, we... The four of us went through a... Well, actually, the five of us, because I guess Ron was part of it too, you know, through a brutal election. And by the time that election was over, you know, none of us liked each other, and none of us liked each other's friends.
Still haven't gotten an invitation to a barbecue.
And you still haven't got an invitation to a barbecue.
You know, wait a minute. I got to jump in here.
But you're getting close. And so, what happened is, you know, there was a lack of trust. And with me, any of the commissioners that I appoint, I have to trust. And that doesn't mean that they were necessarily not competent, but if they didn't have that level of trust with the mayor, it's crazy for the mayor to keep them. And there's no reason to believe that the next election... Well, I think there is. There's no reason to believe that some election down the road won't be as vitriolic as this one was, and the same things would apply. It, you know, it's the nature of the beast. I think that's a weak reason to extend the mayor's term for four years. You know, the reason why I want it is I've made the decision that I'm trying to avoid taking any money from anybody, which resulted in the last election costing me half a million dollars. Now, I'm prepared to spend twice that on the next election if that's what it takes. But at some point, you start pushing the mayor into a situation of having to go to the very developers that I'm accused of being in bed with now. And had I been required to do that, I can assure you, the actions that I've taken this year might have been different. I mean, this way, I get to make decisions that I believe are in the best interest of the city and in the best interest of the citizens of this community without regard to anybody's... I mean, I don't care what the developers think. I didn't ask them for anything. So, for me, that's the... One of the primary reasons is, you know, I want to continue doing what we're doing now without having to do some political dance. I mean, otherwise, I'll find myself being nice to Mr. Pelco by... Closer we get to the election.
Last point, and then this is the operative point for you. I had a discussion with someone who works here in the city who will remain nameless. We had a rather heated discussion over what's going to be a good idea or a bad idea. And the point this person brought up was a similar point, a continuity. And it was from a staff standpoint. Is it harmful or helpful to a city to have to go through a mayoral election every two years? And his point was that four years would be a... Provide more stability for staff. I agree with that. A 10-year term would provide even more stability, but we have to find a balance there. And the balance is stability for staff, because they have to work under real-world conditions. They have to work... Get real work done while we're electioneering every few years versus what does the public want to do? Do they want to have the ability to literally cause a change of power potentially every two years? That is the decision they make every two years.
And they get to make it again.
Right. I personally, I lean more towards giving them the right to make that change every two years. If you're doing a good job, I think you'll get reelected. I've... I don't doubt that if you continue on as you're doing, that you'll have a problem getting reelected.
I really don't think I'm going to have a problem getting reelected. What I'm saying is that if I was looking at a four-year term as opposed to a two-year term, I would be a more effective mayor. And I think that if you were to sit in this seat, you would be more effective. And I think that, God forbid, if Arnie Rodeo sat in this seat, he would be more effective if we were having a four-year term.
That's... To me, that's the balance. There is definitely a plus to having a mayor that's four years. There's a plus to allowing the public to make that decision every two years rather than every four years. And that's, you know, I'm 55-45 on that, and I go back and forth minute to minute.
And, you know, I'm not even opposed to term limits. It's certainly worth a discussion. Y'all are opposed to term limits, huh? Okay.
Okay, this really is the last comment. And it's not for discussion tonight, but I think recognizing that the mayor, as a spokesperson, as a person who does a lot of the appointment, subject to ratification, you put substantially more time in because of the nature of the requirements of the job than council members. And although you choose to give back all of your pay, I think at some point in time we should consider changing the pay for the mayor because the nature of the job, they have more responsibility. I think the proper way to do that is to change the rate of pay that would affect a future mayor or a future council. But that's... I'll bring that up on another agenda.
Well, that certainly has merit, doesn't it?
I have a couple of comments. For one thing, a little while back, I did realize that you were going to have to start thinking about campaigning again. And I thought, I am so glad that that's not me, because you're just... You really are just starting to get into the feel of this position. And then to have to stop and start thinking about campaigning again and forums and all that. And this came up. And when it came up on the Criminal Justice Commission, I thought, that was so simple. Why did I not think of that? It truly is a simple solution. I don't think there's a problem with putting it on ballot and letting the people make a decision whether to do that or not. And I'm... It being so simple, I wondered, why didn't someone do this long before now? The thing with the commissions is that I see, even with the Section 8 Commission, that we're starting to see people who are... Maybe this isn't where I wanted to go. Maybe we'll do some people that will resign and some people who will come on board. So, I don't have a problem with that part of it either. And in light of... I think the word was used as self-serving. I thought, you know, I would really like to be on this council with Mayor Paris in place for four years. Nothing personal. But I also did do this. When the subject started getting talked about, I thought, how would I feel had someone else been in that position instead of Mayor Paris? And I said, I could honestly say the very same thing, is that I would feel for them that they would have to be thinking about running again now and that I would have... I would have been all for this, no matter who it was. So... If there's no more comments, I'd like to ask that this item be brought back to council for approval to put on the next ballot, to extend the mayor's, whomever that may be, term from two years to four years, if that's proper.
Before we get a second on that, I thought maybe it might be even good to hear from Ron as well, so that... I mean, obviously, up to this point, we've heard from three of the council members. When this was brought to my attention, I too, I don't really... I really don't have an opinion that it's negative to extend the... Putting it to vote and letting the people decide to move the mayor's term to go to four years. I guess I was either fortunate or lucky, or I did a good enough job. I was one of those commissioners that was reappointed, gosh, I don't know, was it six times, to two-year terms each time, because I was the mayor's appointment? I think that, over time, added some continuity to the planning commission, so I can understand why the commissioners might be concerned about that. My biggest thought was is I'm questioning whether or not... And I guess this is from a different point of view, because I think I could support Sherry's motion. But where I was a little bit confused is, is what is the Justice Commission have to do with making recommendations to a mayor's term? I'm not quite for sure if there's a connection there. I would have thought, as simple as Sherry said, why didn't I think about that? Why wouldn't I... I enjoy working with Mayor Paris. Why didn't I make that recommendation? But I would hope too, that maybe we could get some better clarifications, because I still don't see the connection of a mayor's term and the Criminal Justice Commission making that recommendation. In fact, I looked at the vote and I was not quite for sure about why somebody would vote. Maybe they voted no because they didn't think it was right to make that recommendation. But I felt before we closed this up and took the vote, I wanted to chime in on my interpretation. I was a little befuddled there, so maybe what we might want to do is one of two things, either get some clarifications on the recommendations that the commission should be made. I clearly understand planning commission's recommendations to the council, but what I'm really... really, really kind of confused about is where the criminal justice fits in with the mayor's term. But again, I can support what Sherri said.
I would certainly hope that any commission I have, if they want to make a recommendation on what kind of socks I wear, that they feel free to do so. The reason we have, if they think it'll...
What color are they tonight?
I'm not wearing any.
You give me a hard time about that?
I have my boots on, I don't need to. The point I'm making is that I hope, I certainly hope that there is nobody out there that ever feels in any way inhibited about making any recommendation. And, you know, I'm a little, I guess it's an issue with some people, some people didn't vote on it. Mark Brown, who I consider to be a very dear, close friend, he thought it was a stupid idea and voted against it. And he still gets to stay on the Criminal Justice Commission. You know, I get that some people think it's a stupid idea, but please, I don't want us to ever do anything that creates obstacles to anybody's ideas or recommendations.
Yeah, one last thing, Mayor Paris. Maybe the solution so that you, one that would run in the future, so that they don't have to take substantial money to run a race, maybe we ought to adopt similar policies that other cities have, and just put a cap on it, and then you're not out $400,000.
Well, if I have to, if I have to spend a million, I want to be able to spend the million. I mean, I don't, I disagree with caps.
Oh, okay. I just, the impression I got that was maybe, I could, that it could be pretty onerous every two years.
Let's be clear about it. Had I not spent that half a million, there would not be a Criminal Justice Commission. There would not be an Architectural and Design Commission. There would not be a Section 8 Commission. Most of the progress that was made in the last year never would have occurred, and that's the reality of it. And I would spend twice that, because I think this city is a better city as a result of what we, what the entire community has done in the last year.
Right. But again, my only concern was, you brought up the developers, and I know that that's a, that's a tough spot for you, so.
So we should make a rule that developers can't give any money? How's that?
Mayor Paris, one thing, one thing I did want to say is that I did hear the day, because they were also talking about the medical marijuana, and I was watching that from home, and did hear the information go forward. I think it was at the same time, but I saw this portion and watched and did not catch the tone that's been brought up this evening. And like I said, I really did think, you know, that's a very simple solution here, and that all those commissioners serve at your pleasure, and I don't think any of them are secure. I would not assume...
It would certainly be a mistake for any of them to assume they were secure.
I mean, and things happen, so, but I just want to throw that in there. I did not catch that tone of the Criminal Justice Commission, that that's all they were doing was looking out for themselves on a commission, so.
I guess I'm supposed to speak now, huh? Commissioner, Commissioner, is that where the other commissioner, Councilman Mann wants me to speak on it? Well, you guys have hit, and ladies have hit, a whole bunch of stuff all at once, but first off, who cares how it got here? Let's discuss the merits of the item itself. I mean, we can, in fact, we did spend quite a bit of time talking about how it got here and whether they should or shouldn't, or whatever. But I think, considering anything like this, sometimes people get short-sighted and look at the issue as it sits now. Rex Paris is mayor, and here there's election, we have this particular council, we have this particular commission. Whenever we craft any ordinance, sometimes it's short-sighted, well, this has to be fixed right now here. But how does that law or ordinance or policy affect 10 years from now, 20 years from now, when the mix is different? You know, who does it, who does it affect? One is on pay. I don't want to compare how many hours everybody puts in, but I make about five cents an hour for the time that I put in here, and I don't want a pay raise. I'm not, I don't want any more taxpayer dollars. You know, it's set by government code, and we hit, I mean, we make $600 a month now, and we hit a population of 150, we'll make $800 a month. But that's, but we chose that, we know that when we choose it. I'm not for any of that. Caps on how much people contribute, I'm against, I mean, this is all elections, just not us. I'm against caps. That's freedom of speech. We think now, okay, it's the developers. But what if something happened, and there was some citizens group out there, some environmental group, that the city council that was here 10 years from now is doing something against the environment that they disagreed with, and they wanted the freedom to be able to speak out to get their candidates elected? They should be able to do it. You know, that's, that's, we have reporting for that. Term limits? No, we have term limits. It's called an election. So that sort of hit all the other ones, and the planning commission, and the commissions that the way it's set up now. If we don't like the appointments that he picks, guess what? We don't vote for him, and they don't make it on there. And then we get stuck with him having to try to think of some new ones, and we have a discussion. That's set by government code too. I totally agree that we give staff direction, and let's put it, you know, put it on the ballot and decide, mostly because, it's not because I want him or don't want him here for another four years. I think he's doing a great job, and I like working with him very much. But you got Steve Knight, he just got elected. You know what? As soon as you get elected in the assembly, guess what? You're already doing a fundraiser, you're already running a campaign, you're already running for election. Buck McKeon, as soon as he got in. Kevin McCarthy, as soon as he got in. Two years is just, I disagree with that too. I think the assembly should be four years, and the senate should be six. I think congress should be four years. You know, it used to be a part-time congress, it used to be a part-time assembly, now it's a full-time job. I think the term should be set, because it does take a lot, and you do need to get stuff done. So I think, but I think the people should decide on it. You know, I think, I think four years, when we set it up before, before the mayor was elected, any mayor was elected, it was a four-year, it was a four-year term. Everybody was elected at four years, and it would rotate, okay? That's what they do in Santa Clarita. That's one way of thinking. You elect a strong mayor position, then there's other powers, not a lot of powers, not more, it's the spokesperson. It's different than a charter city. I'd like to see us move towards a charter city. I don't think we're at that point at this, you know, in the cities thing. So there, I hit all the other stuff, and so let's, I don't think we need to vote on it, we just need to give, if there's a consensus, like give staff direction and put it on the next agenda.
Is that correct?
Well, there are a number of issues that we need to address in moving forward with this. The final date that we have to have an action by the council is not until November, when we put the proposition on the ballot. However, there are some interpretation issues of the code as to what the code allows in terms of the wording of the proposition that would go on the ballot, or measure in this case. Whether we can just vote on four years period, or whether we have to put it alternatively, two years or four years, and the one that gets the most vote wins. Question is, when's the effective date of the measure? Should it be adopted? Does it go into effect with the next term, or does it not become applicable until 2012? There's a fair amount of...
Mr. McKeon, I'm sorry, can you explain what you meant by that? How applicable, once it, are you talking about the November election? If it was passed...
It'll be the April election.
Be the April election.
April election, okay.
Would it be effective immediately or for the next?
Would it be applicable to that, the term to which, whoever is mayor elected at that, would it be applicable to that term? Or would it be not applicable until our next election, which would be 2012? If we were starting from scratch and didn't have an elected mayor, and we put that proposition on the ballot, then that would not become effective until the following election. But the code is silent as to the effective date of the term of that elected mayor. And so we're, I'm trying to come up, I'm going to have to go back through some legislative history perhaps, and we may seek legislative counsel opinions through Senator Runner's office to get some input on that, because what I don't want to do is take an aggressive interpretation of this and have it shot down after the fact. That doesn't do us any good. So I think if we bring this back sometime in August, September, it gives you more than ample time ahead of the actual deadline to consider all the various issues. But I think we can get pretty clear, or as clear of answers as we can get by that time, and make a good presentation to you on what the various choices are.
Let's shoot for August, you'd never know when I'm going to make these guys mad.
We'll see if we can do that.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. Yeah, let's take a break. I've got to swallow my PowerBar dinner. New business item number four. Any speaker cards?
No speakers.
No speaker cards. Mr. Ludick, would you be terribly upset if we didn't have you?
Would I be terribly upset? No, I wouldn't be terribly upset.
I mean, you'd have a burning desire to, okay. We'll waive the staff report. Is there a motion?
Move that we appropriate $50,000 from our operating contingency account, from one own account listed to the other account listed, without reading all the numbers, for professional services for the Architectural Review Commission.
I'll second that motion.
Trying to get my button to work.
Okay, if you all vote again, please.
I'm sticky with PowerBar. Okay, moving on to new business item number five. Any...
No speaker's cards.
Just waive the staff report, is there a motion?
I move we adopt resolution number 0961, and also the addition of the recommendation from the staff that we added at the beginning of the meeting.
Yes.
I'll second that.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. Let's hear new business item number six, Randy Williams. He almost got by.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was beginning to think I got all dressed up tonight with nothing to say.
Are you wearing socks?
Yes, and they're black tonight.
And do they match? You know, you reveal one thing.
We have been working for several months now to develop an agreement with a company called East Solar Incorporated. I know that's a name that's been widely heard around the valley for a number of months, and it's one that will be heard of, I'm sure, even in greater number and in greater importance in the future. I would like to point out that all of this started with them just in October of 2007, when they came to the city, a fledgling company, they were looking, they had a great idea, they were looking for someplace to build it. They didn't come with their hand out asking for money to build it, instead they said, help us to find a place that would be suitable, that would be appropriate for Lancaster to support us. About a year later, so October of 2008, those same officers of East Solar came again to me, and they said, what can we do for the city? So we began to discuss in greater earnestness what their long-range plans were and how they intended to do it. I should have explained that when we first met, the idea then was that they would potentially build their demonstration plant at 60th Street West and Avenue F on property that the city owned. And we were discussing with them ways that they could use recycled water even then, two years ago, nearly two years ago. And they right away jumped on that and said, yes, we could do that. So we worked through a number of issues, we worked with the planning department, we worked with the county, we ran into some zoning issues with the Fox Airfield out there, and certainly we didn't want to go sideways with that, so East Solar found another place, as you well know, at Division Street and Avenue G. As we worked with them about the whole notion of using recycled water, and we brainstormed how they might be able to put something back to the city, we hit upon a mutually beneficial approach to the use of recycled water for their operations. And at the same time, them giving to us, or buying for us and turning over to the city for the public use, or for the public future benefit, a like amount of recycled water that would be, once all of the necessary permits and permissions have been obtained, recharged back into the aquifer for future generations to use. What we have for the council to consider this evening is a labor of love that Mr. Kevin Davis back here, representing East Solar, and your own staff have put into an agreement. This is the first of two agreements. The second agreement will be coming back to you within 90 days. The second agreement speaks more specifically to the amount of water and how they would have that water delivered to them, and what their obligations for purchasing it and so forth would be. The agreement tonight, though, that's before you, we're calling the development agreement, the second one will be called the water supply agreement. This one commits the city and East Solar to work cooperatively such that East Solar can construct as much as 1 gigawatts of electricity generating capacity at properties that East Solar will acquire and then build upon. What they have asked the city to do, of course, is to help them by providing the cooling and the makeup water that they will need for their operations. That would be in the form of recycled water. Their planning is moving along rapidly, they have a lot of steps they still have to go through, environmental issues, they have permitting issues with the California Energy Commission, some permitting they have already accomplished, and they are moving forward with that. But they also have enough uncertainty as to the specific dates that instead they wanted to start us off with this development agreement, and we wanted to participate with them, in such fashion that we were able to identify for both of us what our benefits and what our obligations would be. This obligates East Solar to construct whatever delivery system is necessary to get recycled water where they're going to be using it, and to get it to future recharge fields that we could use then for the recharge of the aquifer with recycled water blended with other imported waters. In addition to that, because there is some uncertainty as to the specific routing, East Solar has suggested to modify what had originally been our approach, and that would be that they would also contribute half a million dollars to the pilot project that we have ongoing at 60th Street and Avenue F, that would hopefully, we think, lead to the permitting of recharge facilities throughout the valley using recycled water. That is the key, that's the cornerstone to the whole process of recovering and making full use of recycled water into the future, that recharge pilot project at 60th and F. We had suggested that they contribute half a million. They've come back and said, we will give you that half a million, but we'd like to up to ante and make it 2 million. And the 2 million then would allow them to have some flexibility in the routing of a future pipeline, should that become necessary. We would have been happy to have given them that flexibility anyway, but we didn't turn down the additional 1.5 million dollars.
What are you trying to do, get Kevin fired?
So what we have before you, as I said, is a development agreement that basically spells out those terms, and also commits the two parties to continue to work together to craft and have brought back to the council within the next 90 days the water supply agreement. If you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Randy, you did a, you did an awesome, magnificent, incredible job with this. I mean, you have been a substantial factor in creating something that is truly going to change the world. I mean, I can't imagine, you know, now that you're retiring, that that isn't the finest way to leave, you know, to have accomplished something that great. way to leave, you know, to have accomplished something that great. I get chills thinking about what's coming because of your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Now I don't feel so bad about dressing up.
Okay, any discussion? Is there a motion?
I'll move that we adopt the developer agreement with East Solar.
Second that.
If you could all vote again, please.
Could I get a new button, Jason? Thank you.
No, you just can't eat power bars.
It's unanimous. Thank you. Moving on. I thought we were having the presentation from the Architecture and Design Commissioner. Is that next?
You waived it.
You waived that report.
You waived it.
That report was waived.
Yes, sir.
But it's in writing in your book.
Would you like to... Why didn't somebody stop me?
You were on a roll.
Like that's possible.
Mayor, if you wish, I'm sure Brian will be able and willing to give that report. And they did put some time and energy into it, as well as the Architectural Commission put time and energy into it.
I would like that report. Okay. He even asked if it would hurt his feelings.
I did answer your question.
You had two chances to say something.
I did. I said I wouldn't be terribly upset.
Does that imply there's not going to be a lot of enthusiasm in this?
Actually, the chairperson of the commission, I believe, has left.
That's right. She's getting recall papers for me.
At your last meeting, Mayor Paris and members of the council, you requested an update on what the activities have been and what the projected work program is for the Architecture and the Design Planning Commission. This group began its work in September, and in that time, they have spent an extensive amount of their meeting time really educating themselves and reviewing what is going on in the world of design guidelines. And they have studied guidelines from a number of different communities. They have heard from a number of different people who would be affected by these and, in fact, continue to do that. They are slated to hear some information from the representative of the BIA in another few weeks. And they have even taken a look at the recommendations that were originally created by the last ad hoc design committee that was created, I believe, back in 2005. From all of that, they have really set a direction. And since they did that, they have made some pretty good progress on what they're looking to achieve. They are currently using and operating on a template that the City of Tucson has used. And it's not that they are taking those exact design standards or looking at copying them completely. But what they felt was good about the City of Tucson was that its design guidelines were very easy to use for the end user, as it's called. In other words, a developer coming in, a person coming in, looking at creating a project, can take those guidelines from Tucson and understand pretty clearly, both from the written word and from a lot, use of graphics, photographs, and things of that type, what the city really desires to see. And they have already completed a first portion of those guidelines. They have reviewed them. They are currently working on the commercial and industrial portions and the retail portions. In your staff report, you've been laid out, or it's been laid out for you, a list of projects and things that they have accomplished to this point and also where they intend to head. Their goal at this point in time, and I consider it quite ambitious, but they have indicated that they are quite willing to put the time in as necessary, is to have a list of guidelines, a draft of those guidelines, finished by the 1st of October so that they can be sent out to the people in the community who would want to review those. They are not going to give them an exceptionally long period of time to review them because their ultimate goal is to take a final vote on the 13th of November and make a formal recommendation to you as a council that you can hear on your December 8th meeting. They have, as I said, really, really devoted themselves to this, especially in the last few months, since they have kind of gone through a lot of the basic questions that they had originally, you know, everything from design terms to how do these guidelines fit within the overall framework of the city's development regulations. With those questions pretty much settled and understood on their part, they have really begun to move forward on what the design guidelines themselves ought to contain. And, you know, in watching them work, they do wrestle with issues. They are trying to, I think, create a level of accomplishment for the city that really begins to set it apart in terms of its physical appearance. I would say that having been here for the length of time I've been here, since 1984, I don't recall any other group, whether it was an ad hoc design committee or, in this case, a commission specifically created to work on this, having gotten as far or had as clear a goal of getting to the end as this group does. I think, as I said, they have a very ambitious schedule. They are very committed to making it happen. Within the staff report, one of the things that they have noted and staff has brought forward to you is a request for some appropriation of money to help in the graphic creation of those final guidelines. One of the things that is very clear, if you look at good design guideline templates, is that the better ones have more illustrations, more photographs. They graphically read the way that someone going in can understand. It's one thing to have a written word that says, "We want your building mass to be articulated." Okay, you know, that's a great thing. Architects may well understand that. But much in the way the city has done with its downtown specific plan, much in the way that the Amargosa Creek specific plan is written, there there are design guidelines that are illustrated. They say, "This is what we mean as a city. When we say we want articulation, this is what we mean. When we say we want a certain amount of window orientation, this is what we mean. When we say that we want the building to kind of be divided into thirds and you need to treat the bottom third, the middle third, and the top third, here's what we mean by that." And this commission wants to make sure that their work and what they recommend to you is well understood. One other thing I think that I would add to this is that this commission has not been simply bound to its normal meeting dates. They have been more than willing and, in fact, have met on days that are beyond their normal days. They've been willing to go out in the field because they wanted to go look at good examples of design in other communities. They've done that, not because we asked them to do it, but because they themselves wanted to go do it. And I think that that speaks to, you know, the level of commitment that they do have to doing this. To do a good set of design guidelines does take some time. At the same time, they want to make sure that they don't disappoint you as a council in terms of getting something to you that can be effective, particularly during this time when development as a whole is at a lull. We've also given them the opportunity as a staff. We've taken before them some of the elevations that have come in recently on a couple of industrial projects and other things, to have them have the opportunity to look at them and begin to understand that how, you know, as they create these design guidelines and these recommendations, how would those be applied in a real-world situation? In other words, it's very easy to say, "We don't like this," but what are the things that would make it better? And they've done that with a couple of industrial projects. I wish we would have had the opportunity to do that with some residential, but we haven't had that opportunity. I think it's also worthwhile to note that we, as a staff, in the first project that we had of substantial size, the conditional use permit at 60th and K for the commercial center, we have in the conditions of that a requirement that if subsequent buildings come in and we, as a staff, cannot reach an agreement with that developer as to how those buildings are going to be designed, that dispute goes to the Architectural and Design Planning Commission. That's in line with the municipal code. So not only are we looking to the immediate effort that they have for the design guidelines, but in trying to look at the language of the ordinance that created them, trying to set in place what their authority and what their actions are going to be as we go through, you know, development review in the future, particularly at some point it's going to pick up again after the economy changes. So that's a brief summary of where they've been and where they intend to go. The report, I think, is a lot more detailed in terms of the exact things they've done. But I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have or take back to them any concerns that you may have that they should be addressing.
The comments I made previously about the level of dedication and education that all of our commissioners are striving towards is phenomenal. And everything you've outlined just proves that, that they really are going above and beyond. All of us, at us planning commissioners in the past, you sit on the Citizens Advisory Committee, and we all wanted to get to a point where we had these standards. And over the years, I'm thinking, why didn't we get there? Because we didn't put, I don't know how many hundreds of hours that this panel has put in and staff has put in to get to this point, to create what we're asking for. They're doing an outstanding job.
I remember when I was very young and I went on the planning commission and Kinman was the older planning commissioner and was venturing me.
Over only by experience, Rex, not by age.
I'm thrilled. I'm totally thrilled. I assume that this is going to be a total redesign of the way we're doing most everything, right?
They have looked at everything from the actual buildings themselves to site design issues to even parkway and street design issues. They've taken that into account. And one of the things that we did bring up to them early for them to keep in mind was the whole issue of sustainability, energy efficiency, and things of this type. There's a lot that we've asked them to consider, but aside from kind of probably initial sensory overload that we gave them, I think they've handled it pretty well. But I think one thing, and kind of going back to Council Manzilio's point, yes, the city has talked about design guidelines at various times. I think the difference here is that you have a city council and an Architectural and Design Planning Commission and a staff that are all in agreement of going a direction, and that makes a lot of difference, you know?
Okay, we look forward to it. Thank you very much. Oh, the discussion of the changes to the commission. Just so you're aware, there'll be some openings on some commissions. If you guys have any suggestions as to who you'd like to fill them, I would like to hear from you individually, without you conferring with each other for obvious reasons.
You'll have to give us some sort of heads up on which commissions.
Yeah, I will. As soon as I know. What I've done is I've asked all the commission chairman to evaluate their commissioners, have discussions with their commissioners, decide who wants to stay, who wants to leave, and then we can, you know, I think just improve it a little bit. Appreciate the heads up. Thank you. And I sincerely mean that. I mean, if you guys got some competent people you want to put on, I'm more than happy to talk to you about them. Thank you. Any announcements, Jason? Thank you. City clerk?
Ladies and gentlemen, this is the time that you may address the city council on items that are not on the agenda. You'll find speaker cards at the back of the council chambers. We ask that when you fill them out, you fill them out very clearly and concisely so that if the staff or the council needs to get in touch with you, we will be able to read the cards and do so. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. When you approach the podium, you'll see three lights. The green light comes on when your time begins. The yellow light comes on when you have 30 seconds left, and the red light comes on when your time is up. We do ask that you be considerate of the allotted time to allow other people to have their three minutes as well. Following this procedure will allow for a smooth and timely process for the city council meeting. And also, our microphones are very sensitive and are able to pick up your voices, so we respectfully request that you do not try to adjust them. State law prohibits the city council from taking action on items that are not on the agenda, and your matter will be referred to the city manager. Thank you.
Thank you. Artis Mays?
Like I said, thank you to the mayor and to the council. It's a privilege to be before you tonight. Mr. Mayor, this year is concerning you. February 27th, you were at the Grace Resource Center and you had a news conference. In fact, Bob Wilson, he took that report that day, and it says here on the front of the paper, "Mayor Paris to Homeless, Go Home." Not only that, Mayor, you said that some insensitive things...
No, 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 wait a minute. Are you saying I said that?
Well, Bob Wilson?
No, you're reading a headline. Bob Wilson didn't write the headline.
It says, "Mayor Paris to Homeless, Go Home."
That's a headline. That's something the paper makes up. It's not something I said.
Okay. And also, you gave $10,000 to help them get home, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, I did. Aren't you happy about that?
I'm glad you did. But, Mr. Mayor, it's a way to do things. Not only that, you said some things insensitive about the Section 8 housing people also. And everybody's not on drugs or they're using their house for gang banging. A lot of citizens are using that Section 8 for what the government gave it to them for. And what I want you to know tonight, that homeless people can vote and Section 8 people can vote also, Mr. Mayor. And we need a mayor for everybody, just not for some of the people, Mr. Mayor. And another thing, we contacted you from the Coalition, and we tried to have a meeting with you prior to going to Grace Resource Center because Steve Baker, they're doing a great job. In fact, I stopped getting groceries after this because I was very hurt over this, Mr. Mayor. And I'm wondering if you knew what you were saying because homeless people are hurting, and they need someone to condole them. And we felt that you would be a mayor to do that, but in fact, you want to kick them out. And everybody's not coming from Los Angeles. A lot of homeless people are here in Lancaster and Antelope Valley that were raised here, but through losing their homes and jobs, they became homeless. And with all this land that we have around us, we need to do something for the homeless people besides kick them out.
Mr. Mays?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Do you know anybody, anybody in the entire Antelope Valley that has given more money to the homeless than my wife and I?
Yes.
Do you? I don't think you do. Why don't you ask Mr. Baker? Why don't you ask Mr. Baker if there is anyone that has given more of their personal resources to the homeless? And it really kind of offends me that you come here and say that I'm kicking the homeless out and I'm insensitive to the homeless because I took $10,000 of my money, my own money, and said, "Mr. Baker, whenever there is somebody who is homeless, but all they need to do is get home, but for the want of a ticket and the food to get there, I want you to give them the money and help them get home." And since then, 80 people, 80 people have been able to return to their families. Now, I understand folks like you get to take something like that and hold up a headline and act that like I'm some kind of insensitive, "I am at a public meeting, so I will hold back what I have to say." But you are grandstanding. That is all you are doing. Because you had that meeting with Mr. Baker, and when Mr. Baker explained the program to you, you said that you agreed with what I was doing. And then you went out and you had a... And then you went out and you had a, a demonstration about what a, what a terrible, mean mayor I was. And you're perfectly entitled to do that, but when you come in here and do it, people are going to tell the truth. And the truth is, is that you absolutely agreed with what I was doing.
Mr. Mayor, Mrs. Daisy Gonzalez from SoCal Channel 3 went over to your office that day, and she asked you, "What did you think about that?" And you know what? You told her you had to go to the gym.
They asked me if I was going to go to your demonstration, and I said I had to go to the gym, because I did not want to waste one second, one second of my time for you to get a cheap headline. And that's all you were doing. That's all you were doing.
And I want you to know that dollars can vote. People vote. And the homeless can vote, and the Section 8 people can vote also.
And I want everyone, I want, I want everyone who disagrees-
And for you to get four more degrees, Mr. Mayor, you're going to have to do better than you're doing. We need a mayor with compassion, not an iron fence.
Listen, I, I want you to be clearly aware of this. If anybody disagrees with the changes I've made in this city, I would prefer that you do vote against me. Good night. What happened to Mr. Paul? John Collard? Hi.
Vice Mayor, Council. I have the dubious honor of, I've been selected as the incoming chairman for the Lancaster Chamber of Commerce.
Are you crazy?
Perhaps. But I wanted to introduce myself, and, you know, as, as volunteers, we give our paycheck back as well. But I contacted your office shortly ago, and I don't think it's been done for quite some time where the mayor of the city was the installation officer for the incoming chairman. And I extended that invitation, and I want to thank you for accepting that invitation. Your eyes are searching, but your staff tells me that you've accepted that invitation. Like I say, I, I don't think it's been done for some time. I, I feel it's a bit of an olive branch, and I'm grateful to be the one to be able to do that. It is an installation party. It's not an installation, a rubber chicken dinner. We actually have a Jimmy Buffett band. It's going to be poolside at the Antelope Valley Inn. It will be the last time that they use that facility where they actually have the pool, because it's been purchased by the AV Medical College, and they're going to fill that pool in. So, no socks are required. And hopefully, you'll wear your Tommy Bahamas and Hawaiian shorts as well.
I, I can assure you, the last thing you want to see is me in shorts.
Well, actually, that's-
Horrible sight.
Well, we had in mind. No. I, I also want to reassure the council, you know, we have taken up the banner of this local first initiative that can be found at avpledge.com. We're very happy about that. It seems to have some real traction, and we're glad to be involved with that. Additionally, quite some time ago, when the city of Lancaster started going through their, their rebranding efforts, a lot of talk was had among the, the board, and we decided that we'd like to support that. And so, it's taken a while to get the traction we need, but we have returned to referring to the chamber as the Lancaster Chamber of Commerce, and we've returned to calling the Roseman Chamber of Commerce the Roseman Chamber of Commerce. So even though it's a partnership, we're really excited about what's going on there. And that's basically from listening to our members. And, you know, the last thing I would just say is that I personally feel it's absolutely necessary for cities and their respective chambers to work hand in hand, to the extent possible, for the benefit of our business community. And so, with that, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. Mr. Mann has persuaded me that we, we need to form a much greater partnership with Lancaster Chamber, and we're looking forward to that. I think this will be an exciting year as a result. Okay? Thank you. Richard Bateman?
I'm here to be with the council and also address the city managers of the deterioration of all your concrete slabs, blocks, curves. I fell in a hole, concussion, broke my arm, wrist, dislocated foot, ankle, and everything. I'm with the church over there on Sierra Highway near J, and I think you ought to take a look at Public Works, start firing some people. If they don't do their job, replace them if they don't do their job, and pay attention to the city, because go right over there, McMillan's, seven, eight, 10 feet of concrete curb, been rotting what, 12, 15 years? These people know it. Why don't you fire these people that don't do their job? Why should I go to church and step in a hole, flip upside down, land on my head, and wind up our AV hospital from 6:30 to 10:45 in the morning? For them to tell me I got a broken wrist, concussion, my left side screwed up, and dislocated shoulder? All I'm here for is making a point, you people should do your job, who are the underlings, so they can do their job, and you don't, get rid of them, get them with somebody. See, these people get into a job, they think they got job for life. Get rid of them if you don't do your job. Mr. Paris, Mayor, you drive around, live here, I'm born and raised here. You can count on that one.
Me too.
Yeah, you betcha.
And before you go on, I'm, I'm sorry that happened to you.
But you can drive around and look at detail. I did not know this. And, you know, I'm up here in both cities everywhere, and I know, know all you folks. And I'm sitting there driving around since this happened, I'm seeing potholes here, potholes here, everything, jerk out a tree, who cares? Maybe we'll put something in it or not? All I'm here is to say, look at your city. You're telling everybody you've got a great city? You do have a good city, but just go out and take and get Public Works to do their job, that's all. Pay me. You know how long it took me to fill that little, all these holes in? Four or five shovels of cement. You six sack. Would you give a broom finish? Will last forever. Look beautiful, too. That's all I'm saying.
Before you go, can you give me a better idea of where this happened?
Oh, right there, right there on Sierra Highway in J across the street from commercial cars there.
Jason, can we get somebody out there?
Mike Lionwine's the minister. And he's complained to you guys for three months to fill these holes, until I fell. I went in there to go to church at night, they had the choir and music and everything, and all of a sudden, we got up there, and he got up in the curb sidewalk, and I get up to shake his hand, and I didn't see that hope. My mind was then shaking his hand, going, and, and getting the Christian music. That's all I'm going to do.
Can we get somebody out there tomorrow?
Well, they already did. Mr. Paris, I, I complained, believe me. I went right up here the next day, and Mark knows, you know, what had happened was, when I complained on Tuesday, Friday, they went down Sierra Highway filling all the holes by Friday. Didn't take long, did it?
I'm, I'm sorry this had to happen.
That's okay. I just want to say, take care of the city sidewalks, go in front of Avens. I think I've been there 10, 15 years. Somebody step off that curb, break a leg, they'll own the city.
I, I think somebody's going over there tomorrow.
Right in front of Avens. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Morgan Herrera? Eric, I could never get this name right.
That's okay. Eric's going to pronounce his last name one more time, right?
It's Birashenga.
Birashenga. Right?
Uh, yeah.
No?
No.
Okay.
Just where do the developers think they will get enough consumers, customers to sustain a home improvement store, multiple garden centers, and two superstores that carry the same type of merchandise? Just where will the customers for these two supercenters come from? Location is five miles away from the freeway. A potential customer from outside local neighborhood will head to the other four supercenters that are easily reached via the freeway or highway. Local residents can only buy so many school supplies, garden, or home improvement products. Can the Elk Valley handle another two supercenters? And more importantly, can they stay open? With so many homes in the area surrounding Quartzville High School that have been foreclosed or still remain unsold locally, local customers' space is limited. Two supercenters built at this location may quickly end up as a multiple abandoned buildings, causing student trouble, just like what happened with the old Costco building before it was torn down. Kids turned the empty building into an indoor skateboard rink, bonfires, graffiti, and parties with drugs and liquid war held inside the abandoned Costco building. Truancy is not addressed at all in the draft DIR, but is a concern many really requested to be included. Truancy will be a problem for both Joe Walker Middle School and Quartzville High School. The AMPM on the corner of LA and Sixtieth is the only commercial store within walking distance from the school. They will only allow a limited number of students in the store at a time, and none with backpacks to prevent shoplifting and other problems. Placing fast food across the street will increase child obesity. Schools have worked hard to provide students with healthy snacks and lunches. Running machines are no longer stocked with junk food. Who has the will to eat healthy when the smell of greasy fried foods reminds you they are just a step away? Students who are not allowed to leave campus for lunch will sneak off and not bother to return to school afterwards. The draft DIR fails to mention, as I said, about the truancy rating, and it fails to also mention how they will have to hire another group of truancy officers to accommodate the two new supercenters.
Thank you. Cleo Goss?
I want you to visual aid.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
A visual aid. Here is Quartzville High School. Here is the proposed Walmart. Can you get any further away from the high school than this? This is dead across the street.
Isn't that upside down?
It doesn't matter.
Well, it's hard for me to figure it out.
Okay.
No?
You happy?
No, one more. Is that it? Okay, that's it, okay.
All right? So here's the high school. Here's the proposed Walmart. Can't get any closer. Here's the proposed Supertarget. Can't get any closer. It's adjacent to Joe Walker Junior High School. Look at all this undeveloped land. It's in Lancaster area. Lancaster can collect the sales tax dollars from there. If you move these proposed projects to any of those unincorporated land, we won't care. We just don't want it across the street from the high school. And why do these two landowners have more rights than all these other owners who currently have homes? Why do these two landowners get to change their zoning, which will affect all these other homes? And we don't get that same right. Now, you said over and over, public safety was your most important thing. The moving in commercial right next to the high school is going to bring crime. Crime follows the money. There's no way you're going to prevent that crime from happening. That is not going to make it safer for the students. It's not going to make it safer for the local residents. Don't, as local residents, have a right to, to expect the land that we bought remains the same way it's zoned? Rather than pulling the rug out from underneath of us, changing the zoning, and, you know, making the safety of the students second class above the owner's, these two properties' land rights? There's plenty of undeveloped land, go anywhere else but here. And there's no way criminals will not spill over when they're fleeing the scene to get into the school, to use the students as, you know, hostages, to steal their cars, to just cross their property. Here is Lancaster sheriff's jurisdiction. You go right here, and now you're LA County Sheriff's jurisdiction. So this criminal leaves here, crosses in two tenths of a mile into Lancaster, into unincorporated LA County Sheriff's jurisdiction, then they move down a mile, and now they're in Palmdale. Who is going to figure out who's got the, the rights to chase this criminal across three sheriff jurisdictions? And I tried to ask a question at your planning commissioner meeting, and they rudely interrupted me. And I know on the 7th, we'll have the planning commission meeting on this proposed project, but nowhere has it said when the, this council will vote upon the zoning. So what date is that?
My, isn't it the 16th or?
14th?
The 14th.
Okay, well, you didn't publish that. You just published the planning commission meeting. So everybody will unmistakingly do the exact same thing they did with the K.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
The date that has been tentatively set in front of the city council is July the 21st. The notice for that has not yet been published. It will be published immediately after the planning commission hearing if the planning commission takes action to make a recommendation. If the commission does not take action to make a recommendation, then there cannot be a hearing yet in front of the council. That's the reason the notice has not yet been given. But so you're aware, anybody else who's interested, July 21st, Tuesday, is the tentative date in front of the council.
For the zone change?
For-
Liquor laws? The liquor changes?
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Cleo, call my office, I'll give you the rest of it. I don't want you have, I don't want you having, I don't want city staff to have to be questioned, is what I'm saying. But they, they're doing everything they can to give you the notice of the hearing as quickly as possible, just like we said we would last meeting.
Yeah, but we only have 10 days to review between the final and it shows up at the planning commission. That's incredibly hard.
Well, Cleo, there's nobody, you know more about that project than anybody in the country. You know more than the developer knows.
Where's, where's Dave Sinclair? There he is.
Oh, he knows.
He knows everything.
Okay. All right, we're doing everything we can to get-
He knows who to pay off.
Huh?
He knows who to pay off. And not saying to you. I'm saying for his people that keep coming and speaking for the K and Sixtieth project.
Okay.
I'm waiting for you to prove that, as you said, safety is more important, and you're not in a developer's pocket.
Okay, Cleo, we'll talk later, okay?
All right.
Thank you.
Just if I can make one comment, we only have one sheriff's department in LA County. You have to go to Avenue A to get the other one, or 285th Street East to get the third one, so.
We're still not allowed to talk about it, are we? Is that the deal? Okay. Thank you. Well, Mr. Pelco, come on down.
Is that the last card?
The last card?
Two weeks ago, I filed the three Brownack complaints against the city of Lancaster. I'd like to know when I'm going to hear a response from the city about that. I know you have 30 days. I'd like to know when I will expect to hear a response. You can answer the question, it's not something that council has to vote on.
I'm, I'm sorry, I don't understand the question.
I'd like to know when I'm going to hear a response from the city council, or the city from my three Brownack complaints.
I'm assuming that that's something you should take up with the city attorney.
Well, I'm bringing that up here now, just thought I'd ask.
Well, it's certainly not our policy to respond to anything legal without it going through the city attorney. If you want an answer, you need to call the city attorney.
Okay, I'll call him tomorrow. Second thing is, you may not, you said you were fine with the power brokers here. Second thing is, you may not, you said you were fine with the power brokers here not contributing to your election. However, that doesn't preclude them from designing or having, paying for mailers, specifically hit mailers. It's certain members of this council have admitted to designing. So, you know, whether or not you take money from them or not is irrelevant because, you know, money gets fed into the negative ads in other ways. So, something I wanted to point out.
Mr. Mayor, just for clarity and save Mr. Pelka a phone call, I intend to provide a response within the 30-day period.
Thank you very much. You mean you don't want to have a telephone conversation with Mr. Pelka? I mean...
There are other people I'd rather talk to.
Okay, moving on. Why do I ask questions like that? Councilmember Marcus?
Yes, for the QAMD meeting that we had on the 17th, the approval of an agreement between the AVA QMD and Mojave Desert to provide contract air pollution control services and operations for the next five years. That's it.
Thank you. Any council comments to be made?
I do.
Yes, ma'am?
I have, I have a question. When do the accusations of Mr. Pelka become slander and can I sue him?
As long as Mr. Pelka is making them from that podium, he is free to be as big of a jerk as he wants to be and there's nothing we can do about it. It's the, it's a First Amendment right.
Welcome to being a public figure.
And even after that, you know, he's actually free to go on the blog and be a jerk on the blog. But let's not make any mistake about it, the mayor of the city of Lancaster thinks Mr. Pelka is a jerk. I'd just like the record to be clear on that.
Okay, I just, you know, wondered when all these accusations... Okay.
Well, you know, they're very clear about what they're doing. The goal is, is they send Mr. Pelka in here to make me angry and then, you know, I inevitably fall for the bait and I get angry and I say something I shouldn't or I have a red face. And then they take a clip of that, you know, out of context and now they're building a blog site so that they can win the election. And they, you know, they talk about it. It's not like they're keeping it a secret. It might even work. But, you know, if I got to sit up here with a stone face and not have any fun, I don't want to be mayor. I mean, you know, this is an interactive process that we should all enjoy and take full part of with all of our emotional repertoire. Right?
Okay.
Good.
Just an interesting fact on that is that when you take the public platform as we've done, to the level to prove libel and slander is basically impossible. You'd almost have to have a FBI wire to prove that they knew the accusations were completely false and they actually went about to do it. But the interesting thing is Mr. Pelka has taken the public platform and so on the issues that he's been bringing up, he gets the same level.
Okay.
Now, I would like to add that when I go home from these council meetings, my wife does say, "Why can't you be a little bit more like the vice mayor and not have to say everything you think?" And Carol, I wish I could.
That's what I love about you, Mayor Perez.
There was an interest, there was, if you've ever seen the John Adams series, you know, with, you know, they were, John Adams was talking to Benjamin Franklin and John Adams says, "Don't you think a man should speak his mind?" And Benjamin Franklin said, "No, I'm really against that."
I had a couple of other things.
Yes, ma'am.
There was something that happened this week that I just thought, you know, was awful. And that was what Barbara Boxer did to a general when she dressed him down. And I thought, she's the epitome of what an elected official should not be like. And I thought to myself, if she would do that to him, what would she do to, you know, a citizen? So I just wanted to get that off my chest because I did call Mr. Bozickin and I said, "I would like for you to do a staff, all-staff memo to call me ma'am and never call me city councilwoman again." So, but anyway, that was a joke. The third thing was with the academy, the Leadership Academy that we had part in over the weekend was really, it was great. I think the one main thread in the whole time was that we really want for the whole valley to work together for what's best for the valley. And it gave me a lot of food for thought and it was really encouraged, a thought process that encourages leadership. The other thing that I wanted to say is that in that common thread, that you see it in the Architectural and Design Commission, that these people are going way above and beyond what they're asked to do because they care about Lancaster. And I'm really encouraged about that. And the last thing was that I just wanted to tell Mr. Williams that he's really going out with a bane because that's really great with these solar. Thank you.
We're going to miss you. On that note, on the Leadership Academy we did this weekend, it was impressive to me that both Sherry and Ron were there from Friday afternoon until Sunday night on a Father's Day weekend, along with 30 other people. And it was, I mean, there was nothing fun about sitting in those conference room chairs for three days. Bob Green was there, a lot of young people there, Josh Mann was there for the entire... And interestingly enough, no one left. And this was Father's Day weekend and it was grueling at times. And all of them were there for the purpose of contributing to the city and making it a better place to live. It was, it was a wonderful experience to watch that. And then they're coming back in December to do the same thing. Mr. Green has promised me he won't put it on Christmas Day like he put it on Father's Day this time and it might not be quite as grueling. And with that, ladies and gentlemen, have a safe, happy Fourth of July. We are adjourned until Tuesday, July 14th, 2009 at 6:00 PM. And Carol, my day is done and I'm coming home.